Liberty and justice for all. You can be seated. Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Michael Branda.
Here.
Danielle Drozd.
Here.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Here.
Beth Manke Hut Wagner.
Here.
Richard La Verriere.
Present.
Amy Parati.
Here.
Sam Sharma.
Sam was here.
Here, sorry.
Jessica Weaver.
Here.
Anastasia Yap.
Here.
All are present.
Very good. So as this is our regular meeting, we're going to go to Agenda Item B, which is Presentations of Awards and Proclamations, and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Brummett. We don't have any audio from you, Dr. Brummett.
Probably because I was talking and muted. Sorry about that. I will repeat everything I just said. So this evening, we're here to honor several John Wallace students who entered a contest that was then, there are award winners in this contest. And tonight, we're also acknowledging the teachers that were involved in this contest, which is Dina Basinkas and Rodura Agana. And if I had forgotten anyone, I'm going to make sure Dan Dayas, Principal of John Wallace, keeps me honest. But I will just start by presenting what they have done through this radon contest. So it was sponsored by the American Lung Association. And of course, it'll swirl for a bit. But the contest was a national radon poster and video contest. And our students, I believe, entered just the radon poster component. And this was to support efforts to raise awareness about radon, its impact on lungs. And obviously, the American Lung Association was a big supporter of this. I believe the students have been studying in their science classes all of the concerns relative to radon, that it's colorless, odorless, tasteless, but is radioactive and can break down in the soil and has been shown to be a cause of lung cancer. It looks like radon causes about 21,000 cases of lung cancer each year. So it's a pretty significant impact. So I'm very proud of our teachers and students for studying such an important health and safety issue. But I'd like to show you their, their winning entries. First up is Nathan Gatos. He is our first place winner. And let me show you his drawing. This actually was featured on the cover of the calendar. And Nathan received the first place honor. It says, "The Girl With Radon Eyes." And he submitted to the national contest as well. So I don't believe we've heard back yet from the nationals. So we will see how he fares there. But for now, he has done very well in being on the cover of this poster contest. And obviously, his, his entry was on the cover of the calendar. So that's pretty exciting. Our next honoree is Katie Klimas. She was the featured artist or is the featured artist for the November calendar. And her entry is called Beware of Radon. And this is part of, I believe, November of 2022. So that has not been obviously displayed yet. And last but not least, we have Iman Khan. She has received honorable mention. And I want to show you her drawing. Hers is called Radon News. And it will be featured in the December calendar. So these children and their teachers really not only have learned about something very important, but now have created this lasting calendar that will be shared out by many. I have a copy of, of the calendar myself in my office, which I'll probably look at each month, especially the months that our students are featured. So I would like to turn it over to Mr. Dayas to see if he would like to add anything relative to any of the other teachers that may be on the call and their involvement in this, because I would like to make sure I haven't not forgotten anyone. Mr. Dayas, are you on?
I am. Hi, Dr. Brummett. I hope you can hear me okay. Sorry, my camera's off. I'm driving. I wanted to make sure.
You can hear me no problem.
All right, awesome. Well, yeah, definitely. Congratulations to Katie, Nate, and Iman. It's quite an honor to have three students from John Wallace Middle School featured in the calendar. This was a statewide contest. So congratulations to the three of them. And I know Nate is still running for the national contest. So we're hoping to hear, you know, congrats on that, Nate, and hear soon how that goes. I also want to thank Mrs. Bazinskis and Miss Agana. They every year partner with Allison Sullivan, who works for the state for radon awareness as well. And they do this calendar every school year. And this is the first time, I can recall, where we had three students featured in the calendar. So congratulations to all for raising awareness for a great cause and also for your creativity. I have the calendar in my office and it looks great. And we're very proud of all three of you. So, so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dayas. And I believe some of the students, if not all, are either on the line or maybe on their phones because they're probably heading from a game or going somewhere. But anyway, I will turn it back over to you, Dr. Fletcher, for any further commentary.
Okay, all right. Congratulations to the three of them. Great job. Do we have any questions or comments from any of our board members? Anastasia?
Hi, I just want to say congratulations to Katie, Nate, and Iman. You did an excellent job. Very excited to hear that someone in John Wallace is running for national. Congratulations to all three of you and thank you.
All right, thank you. And Jessica Weaver?
Yeah, this is a different kind of love fest tonight. I really like the, the change up. So I'm excited about this. I think it's awesome to feature as teachers, but it's also awesome to feature as students. And I'm just super excited about this. I think combining, you know, one, this is a great contest by the Department of Public Health. So awesome. And it's really great to not only have students featured in them, but the cover is pretty impressive. So another example of what our students are doing. So wonderful to see and a great reflection of what our students are all about. And also thank you to our teachers who, who brought this to our students' attention. I think it's really great to be able to partner with the state on this. And really good luck, and good luck to Nate on the national submission. It looks really nice. And I'm now more aware of radon. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Sam Sharma?
Hey, just, I just want to thank all three students and the teachers. So it's a great cause and, you know, congrats on, you know, doing a great job. And thanks for inspiring us. So great job, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Branda?
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. Yeah, I'll be quick to Nate, Katie, and Iman. Great job, you know, looking through. And obviously, my daughter Nora knows all three of you. But looking through the artwork, I was like, wow, they are really good artists. And honestly, I didn't know about radon until I bought a home. So, you know, seeing this and, and the awareness that you're bringing through the Department of Health is awesome. And to Ms. Agana and Ms. Basinkas, I really just appreciate you helping these students out. And Nora's eating dinner, but I told her all the great things that, that you all help these students with. And of course, she already knew about it, but she wanted to say congrats too. So thank you so much and awesome job, students.
Okay, thank you, all of you. All right. So at this time, I'm going to turn it back to Dr. Brummett for the School Counseling Week recognition.
Absolutely. Dr. Fletcher, I think now more than ever, this year more than ever, our school counselors are an invaluable resource to our district. They, many of us may recall, our school counselors may be giving us some guidance on college or career. But in the middle of a pandemic and beyond the pandemic, they work with students day in and day out. And honestly, as I've mentioned in my previous presentations, our students are challenged, you know, having a lot of challenges right now socially and emotionally. And our guidance, school counselors are on the front lines of that. So I think this couldn't be a better opportunity for us to announce and honor School Counseling Week. And our district did a great job of having various activities at our schools to honor the counselors. I updated the board on some of that. But now I'm going to put up on the screen the proclamation. Dr. Fletcher, would you like to read it or would you like me to read it?
I can go ahead and read it.
Outstanding. Give me one second to put that back up. Okie dokie. There it is for you.
Okay. Whereas the Newington Public School System is committed to honoring its school counselors and recognizing their contributions to the educational system and their tremendous impact in helping students achieve school success and plan for a career. And whereas the Newington School Counselors implement comprehensive school counseling programs, a vital part of the educational process for all students as they meet the challenges of the 21st century. And whereas the Newington School Counselors are actively engaged in helping students examine their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents for working in a partnership with parents for focusing on positive ways to enhance students' academic, career, and social emotional development, and working with teachers and other educators to provide an educational system where students can realize their potential and set healthy, realistic, and optimistic aspirations for themselves. And whereas the Newington School Counseling Programs help to increase student achievement and provide a much-needed resource for students, parents, teachers, and administrators. School counselors are integral to student success. And whereas it is the desire of the Board of Education, the school counselors should be made aware of their appreciation. We do hereby proclaim Wednesday, February 16, 2022, as Newington School Counselor Appreciation Day. Therefore, be it resolved that we urge all of the citizens of our community to join with us in actively expressing gratitude to our school counselors, who represent an investment in excellence in our community. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Newington Board of Education is directed to spread this resolution upon the minutes of this meeting and to provide a suitable copy for the Director of School Counseling. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. We have created a suitable copy that's right here. And I will bring it to Mr. Corn tomorrow. He is on the line and he does a fantastic job of leading this very talented group of individuals who I contact frequently just to talk about student matters. Anyway, Mr. Corn, would you like to add anything to this auspicious occasion?
Sure. At first, Dr. Fletcher, thank you very much. At first, I thought you said coffee and I was like, bring it because I need it. But I know some of my team has joined us as well on this call. And I can't say enough how much appreciation the team has expressed to me and district and building administrators from last week and our National School Counseling Week in recognizing the tremendous work that they have done, the hours they've put in, the sacrifices they have made. And this is just a great way to end kind of that celebration by being recognized by our very own Board of Education. I think as the, this would be the first one that I can remember in my time that school counselors be recognized from the board. So my sincere appreciation from myself and my team for this recognition. Thank you.
Job well done.
And Dr. Fletcher, if my, if I may insert, I told this story at convocation my first year in the district. But when I was a student at Newington High School a million years ago, I was, I had a school counselor that was nudging me pretty strongly to apply for a scholarship that I did not think I was going to win. I almost, I put it off. I dragged my feet. He kept at me and I ended up getting the scholarship, which obviously made a big difference in my trajectory through college and beyond. So that's just one example of the type of work they do. But like I said earlier, there are so much more right now because of all of our children's stressors. But I will, I just can't say enough about our team and all that they do for our children. And actually, for our staff as well. They support each other. So I'll turn it back to you, Dr. Fletcher, for any further remarks or board comment.
Okay, very good. And thank you again, Mr. Corn. Any board members wish to make comments? Ms. Parati?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to send my appreciation. I, I saw the news, 61, I think, was at both middle schools. I thought that was really wonderful for Newington to get highlighted like that. And the teacher, the counselors did an amazing job with their, their interviews. So I think that was really great to see. And my daughter is at Martin Kellogg. And she, she speaks with this Iman all the time and she just really loves her. And she's like, oh, my God, it's her. So she was like, super excited to see her on TV. So thank you, everybody. And we definitely appreciate all the work you do, especially now in this time.
Thank you. And Ms. Hupfagnier?
Thank you. I don't in any way want to be repetitive. But I do want to just tell you that the work that you do, I can't really even begin to put a value on it. Our students are so, so, so lucky to be in your hands. I know that the, the job is hard and sometimes the hours are long. But you are making a difference every single day. And the, the kids in this town are just so lucky that you're, you're there for them and, and making their school a safe place socially and emotionally. So thank you so much.
All right, Ms. Weaver?
I will absolutely be repetitive and say thank you. Yeah, I think a lot of us really appreciate the work. And yeah, I was like, wait, have we done one for Counseling Week? I don't recall. So I'm glad it's about due time. And I would say during this past years, you know, we always talk about like, oh, our everyday heroes and who is running the machine? Who's helping the, you know, who is helping make our schools run? And I just want to say thank you because you're a crucial part of that. And we know as board members, but I think it's important for the community as a whole to know that and be recognized publicly to say thank you. Because, you know, I, I know you can get a million thanks from students and probably not enough thanks from students. But we also want to say thank you on behalf of board, but also as community members. So I'm grateful for my counselors at NHS and at Kellogg. So I'm appreciative of them. I think a lot of us are alumni here and are there because of not only our teachers, but our counselors as well. So thank you so much for all that you do. And congratulations. Hopefully, you get coffee as well as Mr. Corn.
Okay, and Mr. Sharma?
Hey, I just want to thank all the counselors. So thanks a lot. And, you know, thank you for going above and beyond. And, you know, congrats to Mr. Corn. So really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Branda?
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. So first of all, Mr. Corn, for a Rangers fan, you have a pretty great team here. Maybe not so much on the ice, but your team is awesome. Go Pens. I'm glad you enjoyed that. But just on a personal note, I see Ms. Schmidt and Ms. Brendel here. They both have done just so much for my own students' personal growth, adapting to middle school during a very challenging time, obviously. And to Ms. Hut Wagner's point, you know, I saw firsthand how those two specifically were there for our students. And our family can't thank you enough.
All right, and thank you. Okay, so I don't see any more questions or comments. So I want to say thank you to all of the counselors for joining us tonight. And I am honored to be able to read that proclamation to you. Okay, so now we're going to be moving on to our next item agenda. And that would be Item Agenda C, which is Public Participation on Any Matter Related to Board Responsibilities. And Civil Participation is limited to three minutes. I ask that you would state your name and the street that you live on. And we will go ahead with Sarah Yizer.
Thank you. Okay, I'm Sarah Yizer and I am from East Robbins Avenue. I wanted to start off by thanking you guys for not reinstating the mask mandate come the 28th. While everyone is doing a happy dance for this mass choice announcement, I have to be honest, and I'm sitting here still very skeptical. Coming straight from the ARP Act and Esser Funding, and I quote, "LEAs are required to review and, as appropriate, revise their safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan at least every six months through September 30, 2023, including seeking public input and taking such input into account and determining whether to revise the plan and if revisions are determined necessary on the revisions it makes to its planned," end quote. So after two years and midterms coming up, the governor conveniently gave you guys your powers back with some caveats, of course. So you are finally able to make decisions for our town. And I'm here tonight and for the remainder of the year in hopes that you come up with your own guidance and recommendations with public input. And that the guidance and recommendations stay exactly that, recommendations. Anyone in, in the education field should know that every plan is not cookie cutter to each student. There's a whole page dedicated to accommodations and modifications for students with IEPs. And one can argue that the bulk of that is just simply good teaching strategies. We all have different learning styles, different needs, different strengths, and different weaknesses. And parents hear, hear your recommendations, but ultimately, we are the ones who make decisions for our children. What I would like to know is the metrics the State Department of Education or the Department of Public Health will be using to gauge whether these policies need to be put into effect again. The Senate couldn't agree that a below 10% hospitalization rate was good enough to measure the end of the state of emergency. Yet yesterday's positivity rate was 6.1%. And the Governor, Department of Public Health, and the Department of Early Childhood declared mass choice. Today, it's at a 4.87% positivity rate. So how will we measure when masks need to be reinstated? Viruses mutate to survive, hence we have variants. And this will truly never go away, just like the flu. I also think it's worthy of noting that the CDC has always recommended masking. And just because there is a recommendation, it does not mean that it needs to be put into a policy or plan. And lastly, I'm also inquiring about the mask mandate for school buses. Not only does it show the hypocrisy of masks working and preventing transmission and contraction, but school buses are actually not public transportation. The US Code website defines what public transportation is. And school buses, charter buses, and many more actually are not included in that definition. So, thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And next up, we have Melissa Tulisano.
Hi, thank you. My name's Melissa Tulisano and I am from Eighth Street. After watching the debate on the floor of the House of Representatives in the Senate, it was extremely clear of what was, was being done without any metrics provided by the DPH to gauge what constituted the end of the state of emergency. And with them voting down and denying parents the right to choose what was best for their child regarding wearing a mask in school or not, the legislature put that decision on the individual boards of education. And after governing the state with executive orders for the past two years, I believe they cowardly backed down from that and put that decision on you because it was an election year. But I am incredibly thankful for the fact that you took the information at hand and made the decision that you did in placing that, that role as a parent to decide what was best for their, their child or not in terms of putting a mask on. But I, just like Sarah had stated, I would like to know what metrics the DPH and the SD, SD, SE are going to determine in regards to reinstating the mask mandate when they couldn't provide that information to the legislature prior to these hearings. The legislature stated they tried contacting DPH multiple times and they were not given any information to make or any metrics to gauge that, that decision. I do also want to comment on the statement in the email that Dr. Brummett sent out regarding the bullying. And I think that can go both ways, not just with, with students keeping their masks on, but also with students taking their masks off. Because for so long, children were instilled with, we're, we're keeping our mask on to, to make sure that we don't get others sick. And now with them coming off, are those children going to be accused of getting other people sick? And I just want to make sure that, and I'm sure it will be, that the bullying decisions would, would be handled appropriately. But I do have some questions in regards to the plan. Like our children are, they still going to be required to be sitting in front of plastic shields with their masks off at lunch? Are they still seated three to a table with the middle child having a plastic shield in front of them? Are children still going to be distanced, those without their mask on compared to those with their mask on? So just some questions regarding the reopening plan that was set forth in the beginning and just some clarity as to what's going forward along with the removal of the masks. But again, I thank you for allowing for parental choice and I thank you all for your service.
All right, and thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll have Allison Carson. And you're muted, Allison. Ms. Carson, you're muted.
Hi. So it's actually Allison Campbell. I'm so sorry. I need to change it on my Google. And I also need to unmute myself. That will be good. I want to thank you guys and I want to thank Dr. Brummett for letting me speak again tonight. I did already send all of you an email prior to this decision, really outlining my position on everything. So I don't want to take too much time up. Your time is valuable. So I just want to state that I am in absolute full support, as I'm sure you know, that the Board of Ed does not pursue any further masking requirements after the 28th. This is the correct decision. It's a victory for social and emotional learning. We know that it is a critical, critical component of our young children's education, being able to see other smiles, frowns, laughs, cries. It's essential to their development and it's going to help them grow into well-adjusted adults. So the sooner we do this, the better. I hope now, as we look to the future and moving forward, that the board supports the position that ultimately, parents are the best arbiters in their child's health decisions. And I will say, we have the absolute finest teachers, some of the best administrators I've ever seen. But it's parents, when it comes to health, that ultimately know what is best for their child. So I look forward to seeing how we pivot from the distraction of COVID measures and how we're going to move on to getting these kids back on track. Student performance, seeing these scores improve. And I just want the board to support the idea that we need to have a real, real sense of urgency in returning to normalcy. I think that should be the goal moving forward. I thank you all again, and I am so, so excited. I will be dropping my daughter off on March 1st. And I plan on seeing all of these beautiful smiles. I am so excited. And thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Allison. Okay, I don't see any more hands raised for public participation. So at this time, I'm going to move on to Item Agenda D, which is our Consent Agenda. And I'm going to ask for motion for the approval of the minutes from the list that is on the agenda.
Done. Motion to approve the attached minutes on the agenda.
Second. Can everyone mute?
Ready?
Yeah.
Yeah. Allison, you're not muted. Thank you. Okay.
Second, sorry.
All right, so we had a motion to approve the minutes from each of the meetings that is, that are listed. And it has been seconded. Can I get the clerk to call a roll?
Michael Branda.
Yes.
Danielle Drozd.
Yes.
Dr. Bruce Fletcher.
Yes.
Beth Manke Hut Wagner.
Yeah.
Richard La Verriere.
Yes.
Amy Parati.
Yes.
Sam Sharma.
Yes.
Jessica Weaver.
Yes.
Anastasia Yap.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Very good. Thank you very much. So now, Dr. Brummett, do you have any reports or anything that you need to update us on? We will take that at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. What I would like to do, if you're amenable to this, is have Mr. Jackamoets go ahead and review the last four items. And then I was going to do a recap of where we stand right now with the budget and some kind of guidance as we head into the deliberation process. So Mr. Jackamoets has four more sections to go through. Is that okay with you, Dr. Fletcher?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jackamoets, please.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. So we have a full quorum, which is great. Four programs left. The first one I'm going to start with is plant operations, which is the custodial services for the overall school district. The program is consistent and equivalent to last year. There's no substantive changes. You know, the staffing profile is the same, the expectations are the same. The basic cost structure is the same, other than utilities, which is, you know, something on everybody's radar screen. With natural gas, power and natural gas heat and electric power. A number of the power plants use fossil fuels and there is the big cost escalation in these areas over the last few months. So that's reflective of what's in your budget request for next year. Right now, the overall program is up two hundred eighteen thousand because of that. The essentials of the costs that we are experiencing is our budget this year, I believe, is three hundred twenty-two thousand for natural gas. And the forecast we were working on last few days estimate will come in around four hundred thousand for this year. Nowwithstanding whatever acceleration or continuation of the inflation trend that's going on for next year. Electricity is better. We're down around seven percent in that area. That in large part is due to the separation of the generation part of the bill from compared to the distribution side. Distribution is all over source, so they put through their own tariffs and we get charged for whatever escalation they get approved by the D P U C. The cost for buying the power through third-party arrangements is fixed for till December of twenty twenty-four. Excuse me, December twenty twenty-three. And, you know, that is about seven and a half cents kilowatt hour. So half of our bill is insulated from any inflation risk while the other half is not. So the cost increase we're looking at there is reflective of, you know, what will happen with ever source. Our consumption for this year for electricity is pretty much going to be on the mark around four point eight million kilowatt hours for the year. The natural gas will be below our expectation by a bit. You know, we've, you know, had a very good trend till the middle of January. And then we had three, you know, pretty cold weeks in a row, which accelerate the cost. But it'll be, you know, even because of that, we'll still end up, you know, decently over budget for the year. That the pricing outweighs the savings we have because of fewer B T Us being consumed. And to try to put that in the context, we think the natural gas rate will be up thirty percent or more over last year's rate to create a context for it. Water is just minimal increases at this point, so that's something that will be fine tuned over the next six months. We're still waiting for our second billing cycle out of M D C for this fiscal year. So I don't have really a perfect trend yet I can rely on. But another few weeks, those bills will be in and I'll have a much better idea how close to the budget number will be. It won't be far off, but it, you know, could be a little bit off. In the budget document that's in front of you, there's one item that's been adjusted because of the getting down from the four point five four number to the three point nine nine number that's not being presented to you. On the third page of the opening section, which has all the different budgetary codes and the different pieces of it, the very last item on page three is the property section. That is seventeen thousand two hundred ninety dollars. And those items have been removed from the budget proposal. And they will be considered as a potential buy ahead in the next two months if we can afford it. Otherwise, they would not occur at this time and they would be deferred till a later date. The other service elements of the plan are the same for the custodial supplies, the disposal services that we have and the water, excuse me, telephone service and uniform costs that we have. So it's a very stable program overall. So anyone have any questions on this?
Ms. Yap.
Just to clarify, excuse me, are you saying that you're taking out the new equipment?
At this time, yes. And it'll either go as a buy ahead if we can afford to do it this spring or it'll be deferred till another time.
So that's, is that the seventeen thousand two ninety with the, that's the number seven hundred property? I just want to make sure it was.
Yes, that's it. Those two items. One for John Wallace, the other is for the high school.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions? Hey, I don't see any more questions. So we can move on to the next item.
Okay, we'll go to the other salaries program next. And for those of you who are not familiar with what other salaries is, this is, you know, in part a holding tank for negotiated arrangements that may not be implemented yet. It's the estimate of future settlements that may impact the budget in that year. That's not the case this year. It's also the place we have all the costs for substitute teachers and related temporary staffing for the district. It'll also have, you know, other elements that are contractual provisions for the overall annual budget, you know, like loss of planning time, special supervision, special assignment costs, things like that. And we have two major elements, which are variables until mid-year at the December adjustment. And that is degree changes and long-term, excuse me, and retirement increments. Okay, now to explain these, in the N T A contract, they have until October of each year to notify us if they've achieved a advancement in their credentials, which will move them across the salary scale from either bachelor's to bachelor fifteen, masters to masters thirty, masters to cags and then cags to P H D. So those are built-in, you know, elements to the contract as it stands now. Mr. Farisi in the H R department basically puts together the plan of study with the individual staff members and they monitor it to see their progress against that and seeing if they're going to be achieving it during the next budget year. So we plan a, you know, budgetary amount of dollars to cover all the possibilities of who may advance and of the whole crew. So if we have, as just thirty people who are advancing, of which maybe ten will be able to finish their program by October, will be eligible for the advancement for this year. So we have to set aside some money based on the profile of teachers for the year. So once the, we get to the mid-year adjustment, those dollars are typically washed out and distributed to the programs where the teachers are. They have achieved that. So they, if it was a social studies teacher and they are moving up a notch, you know, we would move, say, four thousand dollars from the other salaries program to social studies and take away four thousand dollars from other salaries. So that's just the mechanics of moving money around. The second item is retirement increments. Many times, individuals still have the contractual right to decide that they will would like to go on the retirement increment schedule for next year. And that will not correlate to your budget cycle. So when the budget is absolutely adopted on April twenty, April nineteenth this year, there could be other people who announced their intentions sometime between April nineteenth and the end of the fiscal year that have to be provided for. And there are a few of them we have identified that are in that spot where they've inquired about their possibly going on retirement increment next year, but they haven't made the commitment to do that yet. So that's an obligation that is uncertain at this time. But if the teacher says, yes, I want to go on retirement increment, we have to, you know, honor those wishes and they're included in the calculation for next year. In addition, you have situations where people back out of the retirement increment, postpone their retirement one or two years. That is an add back of cost to the salary plan because when we have individuals who are have already announced, I'm leaving and this is my last year. So if they're at a hundred thousand dollar salary for this year, they will be going down to the entry level rate of roughly fifty thousand dollars to the position. So we would already take that, incorporate that breakage into the budget presentation you have in front of you. But there is always a very real possibility and there always seems to be one or two every year that change their mind. And we have to be able to backstop that reversal by having dollars available for that allocation. So there's two elements to how retirement increment impacts the board budget. The other special supervision is really just an hourly rate that's in the teacher contract that we just, you know, provide a set amount of hours to address that need. And the daily substitutes are really the biggest part of the challenge right now. As all of you know, the ability for us to attract and retain and keep positioned staff is very, very challenging. You know, besides the general teacher's absence, the struggles we have in the tutors and paraprofessional area exacerbate that as as well, where, you know, we have a number of, you know, situations where we're scrambling every day to try to cover different situations that are out there. And our fill rate is not at a hundred percent for all of these vacancies. Right now, we're, you know, in good shape for this year, which is not really that great of a, you know, situation to speak to because it means we haven't been really successful being able to fill everything. So we're, right now, our budget in total is a million, one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars for the program for the remainder of this year. And I wouldn't be surprised, we end up somewhere around eight hundred thousand dollars for our final number in this area where we're three hundred fifty thousand dollars to the good because we simply have been unable to fill a number of the slots. And, you know, that helps just make, you know, the everyday activity in the school that much more difficult and more having to be nimble and the principals being challenged to be able to figure out ways to cover classes and do things that would provide, you know, stability for our students. So, so those are the key elements of the program. You know, several minor issues, we have payment in lieu dollars that are tied in here for those individuals who, you know, opt out of the medical insurance plan and request to take the payment that's available to them. So without, I'd accept any questions that are out by the group.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Under the Connecticut sick pay legislation, is that the new legislation that was implemented last year and rolled out this year? Or is this something different?
No, this is from about twelve years ago, thirteen years ago, where it was for service workers specifically. And the state had identified maybe sixty or seventy industrial code, standard industrial codes that these are the individuals that qualify for this program. And at that time, it was a benefit that was identified to be equal in value to two and a half percent of what somebody earns on an hourly basis. And you basically needed to keep a sick day log for them. And or six days, sick days available so they could actually take a sick pay if needed. You know, we had been doing other retention programs prior to this for our hourly staff that we subsequently modified to incorporate the legal requirements of the Connecticut sick pay legislation that's here. And it's what we call our time work bonus, which is payable to the academic support staff at the end of the fiscal year. And we offer this to the individuals in these work classifications where, take our plan, it's worth more than the state plan. And basically, everybody takes our plan. So we don't have those dollars that are specifically addressed to the workers, service worker sick pay, but we end up paying it out as a benefit at the end of the year as far as the time work retention bonus, which really just rewards people for sticking around for the full year to collect what's available at the end of the school year based on their years of service.
All right, thank you very much. So just, just quickly, do we have to pay in to this new program that began last year? Or are we exempt?
Well, we're exempt from paying for, you know, the elements of, also, you're not talking about the leave requirements. You're talking specifically about the sick pay. We are exempt from the sick pay side of it, but we are not exempt when it comes to all the leave provisions of that all involved for, you know, geez, I'm struggling for the exact term for the leave of, type of leave of absence. A Cobra type of leave that's there. So that we are not exempt from.
Okay, maybe you need some coffee too.
Nah.
Anastasia.
I need something more than coffee.
Anastasia.
Okay, I apologize for my dogs in the background. So I had a question for Lou, Dr. Fletcher, if that's okay?
Yes, go ahead.
So you had stated that it's, you know, been hard to fill these spots. What subjects are the hardest to fill? Is there a specific department that's been harder to fill versus another?
Well, if Steve's on the line, I'd like to defer to him because he would know much more specifically where the hotspots are. I have an idea, but I don't know with the degree of depth that Steve would, so.
I am, Lou. Thank you so much. So when it, when it comes to teaching staff, we find our hardest positions to find are in the math and sciences. Any related services or or support services, special education, speech language, school psych. Administrators actually are difficult to fill as well. There's a whole list, actually. It's called shortage areas. The State Department of Education publishes it each year. And it kind of shows what what are the areas of shortage right now, both certification wise and applicant pool. And we find that we tend to trend similar to how the shortage areas are outlined in that publication. Similarly, then, if we go to our hourly employee group, we tend to find that both learning tutors and para educators be are the hardest to fill. Followed both closely and almost parallel to just substitute teachers and long-term substitutes. Those four categories are the most challenging for us to fill. And we are constantly behind. And it's difficult because we want to be able to provide for our students the highest quality servicing possible. And and we're generally running understaffed in those areas as as Mr. Jacobowitz shared.
And are they hard to fill or hard to keep? Because I know with parents, we previously discussed, it was hard to keep them on. And we did touch on maybe due to the fact that they didn't have the benefits. So is that the same issue with the substitutes? I don't know how it works.
So I would, I would say that, to answer your question directly, they are both hard to fill and hard to keep. So it's somewhat equivocal for what we see, the lack of available pool for them to hire, but also then people moving on and doing different things for multiple reasons. But we do see that sometimes they do leave for the piece that you mentioned, benefits or other benefits that are available, whether they be kind of health or medical insurance for salary benefits, you know, I think it runs the gamut. The challenge that we have, and I often, you know, work with a lot of other H R directors in the state, is even those who do offer and provide certain things are still seeing a high transition in in those positions. So the fill rate is not good at all. When we would go and turn and look to our substitute pool, that's a national shortage right now. So we, we manage the hiring and recruitment of our substitutes on our own. We don't use a service. Many districts use a service at a high fee. We take care of that for the board. And what I can tell you is our placement rate is higher than the services that are provided to other districts. So we always run in the eighty percentile or higher for achieving, you know, substitute fill rate. Other districts are running a little lower than that. We constantly bring in those contracted services to see what their fill rate is to make it, you know, maybe appear like we would take their services, but we're really just looking at what their fill rate currently is. And unfortunately, we're a little bit higher than they are. But we're still not doing a great job, meaning we still have times where our tutors or paras are pulled to become substitutes. Our awesome principals sometimes have to cover a class, you know, we just, we find ourselves in sometimes some challenging places.
I have one last question for you, Steve, if that's okay. And it's just a, if that's okay, Mr. Fletcher. So you're saying that you don't use a service. Do you think if you had a service, and most of our admins have, you know, certifications and many So you're saying that you don't use a service. Do you think if you had a service and most of our admins have, you know, certifications and many, many things are very highly educated? Do you think if we had a service that would help alleviate um the administration from having to fill substitutes? Therefore, when there were shortages, maybe then you guys could fill that role since most of them have such high certifications?
I I think it would exacerbate the problem. I think that um their fill rate is lower than ours. So we would be relying on a service to tell us that they have less people than we do and then we would have to still manage it internally um at a higher rate than we currently do. So I I do think that that would actually worsen the problem and it would cost the Board of Ed more to do so. So I'd be concerned if we moved in that direction for the the lesser fill rate that exists through the servicing.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, uh Mr. Sharma, I think you had your hand up. Did you get your answer?
Yeah, I just I just had a quick question. Um Stephen, can you just, can you just um explain like if you if you if we go through um another company, right, to get subs in Paris, like what's the difference? Like, is it? How expensive is it or is it like, you know, we do it in-house right now, but do you think it's cheaper or, I mean, what's the, how much are we saving?
And 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 Lou, I'd also um solicit your participation uh for this response, but um we do sometimes have to go to a contracted service to fill some positions that are required by um that we're more legally mandated to manage, which would be um some paraprofessional positions for for some instances that are in an IEP. And if we can't hire someone in our pool, we'll contract out that service or speech language services. I would tell you, I think the the upcharge is easily a fifteen to twenty percent upcharge that we're getting when we have to hire those folks, if not more, but Lou, I would kind of defer to you for that exact kind of figure since.
Right in the ballpark. Uh if you're, if we're able to hire a substitute or paraprofessional directly at twenty dollars an hour, we would obviously have the tax uh requi- responsibilities that go with that, but we would get a bill from the placing agency for twenty-seven, twenty-eight dollars an hour. Because they would be paying the taxes, uh workman's comp and uh insurance and uh unemployment. And um they need the profit margin for doing the work. So uh, you know, besides being five percent or more less successful filling the uh slots for us, uh it would be three to five dollars an hour more per placement or per hour per placement that we run through those uh services. So there's there's no real um benefit based on what they bring to the table for us to look at right now that, you know, we have enough of a uh staff infrastructure to be able to cover that for ourselves. We're being more successful than they are speaks very highly of Steve's operation and the commitment of his people to get the job done every day.
And and Mr. Sharma, if I could just add on to that, thank you, Lou, um I would add and I would welcome all of our principals to join us in this conversation that um we find when we contract a service, uh it is much more in 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 higher levels of management put on administration to oversee. Because then we are not in control of, number one, just their employment. And and they will either not show up and tell their contracted service but not tell us or be out for periods of time and then we have to fight with the company to figure out why and who they're going to get in and it's just more of a management headache when we have a contracted service than it is to uh manage it on our own. We are thankful always for those contracted services that we do work with and do provide a great service and are well attended. But in general, uh we found a lot greater uh problems with our contracted services than we do ever with our own employees.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right. I'm I just want to make a quick statement about that because having been involved in the school system, I did witness that myself and I would cringe if we went to contract services for substitutes especially. We have more available to us than a lot of them do and we have a higher quality. So I I think that you're on the right path. Uh Ms. Yop.
My question is for um Mr. Freese, if that's okay, Mr. Fletcher. So what do you, what do you do in a situation when you can't find a substitute? Do you use some of the administration who have those certifications or what do we do?
We manage that in multiple ways. Uh we manage that um via the current learning tutor and para educator workforce that we have. And sometimes we have to cover those services differently to then pull uh one of those folks to go into a classroom. So for example, our learning tutors generally are are either certified educators, but they're not working under that certification, but they are still qualified and certified. So they can become a substitute or they at least have a four-year degree, which is required to be in a classroom and substitute. So those are kind of our first go-to. Uh and then we also have uh staff that sometimes we do have to pull to cover that are available that that could do that, that aren't direct classroom teachers. Uh so there are times when we do that. And Mrs. Lawrence told me today that she covered a class for a half a day. So, you know, we have that as well, that those are kind of the hierarchy of of what we go through to achieve that. We also, uh the principals work in concert and they and they contact one another when we're in dire dire straits and they um if there is someone available at another school, then we then have them go over to the other school. So there are a number of ways in which we try to manage it um or which we do manage it and um and 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 so that would be um, you know, the hierarchy of of how we move.
So you're saying the para educators or learning tutors who do not receive any benefits are still um asked to do these tasks?
Uh that is correct. Para uh para educator substitutes do not receive benefits either. Um so they're all considered hourly employees.
Do they receive PTO, accrued PTO?
Um which group or are you referring to all?
The pair, the paraprofessionals and learning tutors.
Uh the paraprofessionals and learning tutors have eight sick days, paid sick days. Uh there's no additional or or differential PTO on top of that.
So if I'm a para educator and I get sick past the eight sick days, you know, we have the coronavirus right now, then what do they do?
They would be on paid days at this time.
Even with the coronavirus?
Yes.
Wow. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't think we have any more questions related to other salaries. So Mr. Jackamowitz, if you don't mind, we'll move on to transportation.
Okay, we're gonna give just one moment here. All right, transportation program is our uh day-to-day uh uh delivery service of students to and from uh the school buildings and home. They handle all of the specialized uh special education uh transportation requirements, either in-house or through the use of uh outside contractors uh that are here. And they also um handle all the athletic activities and other clubs, uh field trips, other school-related uh transportation requests that do come in. You know, of the whole group, we have approximately fifty-five drivers on staff right now. It's basically a fifty-fifty split between uh union staff and non-union. The primary differentiation between the two is whether a driver has a full three-tier or four-tier run in in both the morning and the afternoon compared to the non-union drivers who only have a two-tier run. This is based on the uh board policy for transportation, which says, you know, students who are at the elementary level will get a ride uh within, if they live lot more than a half mile from school. I'm sorry, three-quarters of a mile uh for elementary, mile and a quarter for middle school, mile and three-quarters for high school. And all kindergartners will get a door-to-door ride. Uh these, as the, you know, high school is first in in the morning, the number of students eligible for the ride is much less than middle school or high school because of the policy. So we need a far fewer number of bus runs on the road uh to handle the high school coming and going. So the uh supplemental staff that just handles a middle school and high school run are all of the non-union drivers uh that are there. So it provides the flexibility to meet the demands that are constantly changing and especially the need for students at the primary grades that need the special assistance or just the general support for you know, they're not really independent and uh we want to just allow them to have a lot more freedom uh in transportation arena. So uh that gives us the balance of strong family and parental support as well as uh being able to meet the expectations of the policy for the district. The budget request for this year, uh at this time, uh on your sheets is showing a three hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred fifty-dollar increase from last year. There is also a change on the second page of the detailed budget where all of the equipment items that are on page two, the seven thirty and seven thirty-one account, seven thirty-five account will either become items in the board CIP account or become a buy-ahead depending on how the whole budgetary process shakes out this year. So the request will go from three fifty-three down to two hundred forty-four thousand the uh year for the increase. And there's really only two major drivers to that number. One is the cost of fuel. So the gasoline or diesel fuel price that we're paying right now is less than two dollars a gallon and we're going to be coming off that contract for the next six weeks or so. And they're fully estimating it'll be three fifty, if not higher, uh on the next contract that is available. So we're estimating that cost increase just to put fuel in the buses will be about eighty-four thousand dollars for the year. The second major item is the contracted out-of-district special ed, special transportation. Where when uh individual students are going uh to a placement facility every day, they are uh needing special services on the vehicle, uh you know, to make sure the handicapping conditions. Those uh transportation companies are feeling the same effects as we are with fuel costs, uh inability to get drivers, which is a another chronic systemic problem at this point that everybody has. So we're looking at increases for that segment of our responsibilities to be about a hundred thirty thousand dollars. And essentially, all of this is mandated through IEPs and legal uh expectations from the special ed laws that are here. And we have several minor increases, you know, tires and parts are, you know, in the supply chain where those are up, but that's not radical increase this time. And uh the operation of the net is, you know, stable as far as the uh scope of what we're doing. And we've had very good success of retention of our drivers and uh, you know, we have not actually been in a spot where other companies are uh unable to fill runs and basically cancel uh rides home and tell parents to come get them because their bus company can't work, can't accomplish it today. So we're not at anywhere near that uh particular level of uh concern. But, you know, we've been close as far as on a, an individual day with drivers who are ill or, you know, when, you know, they were out because of COVID, we've had tight spots where we had to do a little bit of uh uh reorganization to make the daily runs happen. That's pretty much it, uh, you know, for the key items. Uh certainly accepting any questions at this time.
Okay, Danielle Dros.
I guess I just have, I have a question for Lou, Dr. uh Dr. Fletcher, if that's okay?
Yes, it is.
All righty, Lou, I just have a question. If we're transferring over the four seventy-one, um that was a couple of weeks ago, that that was, you know, decided to transfer that over to the town CIP or the the town board CIP, why is there still forty thousand dollars in there under that line, item seven thirty-five for a bus replacement if we decided we weren't going to take that out of the operating budget?
Right. Well, those aren't buses. These will be either a van. Uh I believe we have one van and one maintenance vehicle and the retrofit of a security car. Because we take uh vehicles from the police department that come off the line, change them around, repaint them, re-modify the features of it to be suitable for our security officers rather than, you know, an over-the-road police uh car every day. So those are the three elements. Those are not part of the uh larger plan for the uh, you know, the bus schedule that we had uh spoke of earlier.
Okay, and then this, the, for um line item other supplies, six ninety, that's a pretty big jump. I understand that, you know, gasoline goes up, but why would that be such a big jump from sixty-five hundred to twenty thousand?
Okay, hang on one second, I can get you an answer on that. It's basically just all the allowance for bus repair parts. And we have two mechanics that work in-house uh here that do all of the non-environmental type of work where we're not doing fluids, you know, transmissions, oil changes, things like that. And when they have brakes that they need to redo, uh, you know, front-end stabilizers, uh a lot of the other, you know, core hardware parts of a bus, uh all those prices are up substantially right now. So that was the uh need to just be able to provide an adequate allowance for whatever repair needs uh come down the road uh during next year.
So you think it's almost triple what it was?
There are, were a couple of other items with it.
You can, you can get back to me on it if you need to.
I'm sorry?
You can get back to me. I know that the transportation person isn't here, so I don't need the answer right this second.
Yeah, I can't speak to every subtlety, but I can see that they had additional money in for parts cleaner. I don't know if their existing machine is, needs to be replaced. And general uh supply increase for the two mechanics that work in the back shop area. And uh I'd have to get a follow-up on that. I can't speak with absolute certainty on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh Ms. Yop.
So I had a couple of questions in regards to uh what Danielle said for Lou. First question is, you said the contract will be up for the gasoline, it went from two fifty to three fifty. How long is the contract? Is it a yearly contract?
Yes, you know, the town uh and the board work uh through one of the purchasing groups that's available in the state. Most recently, it's been an organization called CROG, uh the Connecticut region of uh governments that associate, band together. Everybody puts in their uh needs for the year and they handle a formal bid that is going to happen sometime very soon uh for the pricing. And, you know, all the basic uh trends and forecasting are saying those numbers are going to come in three twenty-five or higher uh per gallon. And right now, we're under two dollars a gallon for what we're paying coming off the old contract. And this is typically renewed annually. Uh the town, unless the town sees a tremendously favorable uh condition in the market where they would want to uh lock in for a multi-year arrangement, uh they could. Uh but most of the time, they just go year to year and the uh pricing fluctuations have not been that severe to put yourself in a position where, you know, if you're committing to a contract at three dollars per gallon, next year's one-year deal may only be two dollars a gallon because of market conditions.
Yeah, that's understandable. That makes sense. My second question too, um if I'm allowed, is I thought under the school CIP, we were covering not only the purchase of new buses, but I thought the buses got fixed at a bus garage. Why are we budgeting for that if that was already in that under that budget? I I'm confused in regards to that because I thought we were getting new buses. I thought we were putting them on a different schedule and you're saying like repairs, but is that part of the school CIP?
Yeah, the four hundred seventy thousand dollar item is really for the purchase of roughly five full-size buses per year. We have over seventy vehicles in the fleet right now. So sixty-five of those will be staying every year. They have to be maintained and taken care of uh to make sure they stay roadworthy, they meet all the inspection criteria and have all the required services uh that are there.
And that code doesn't do that for you?
Well, we don't have to do all of it. We do certain things ourselves. Like, you know, we will not do oil changes here on site. We will not do transmission work on site because we don't want the involvement with the uh environmental structure of it where it's just like with a gas station, you have, you know, needs of how it's set up and protection of the storm drains, all these other things. So we basically just limit our activities to tire changes, brakes, uh, you know, shock absorbers uh and basic component parts of the buses. And, um, you know, if you have need to replace uh windshield wipers, headlights, uh swing arms that are on the vehicles for the student safety. uh, swing arms that are on the vehicles for the student safety, all the lights for the safety purposes. And our dri, our mechanics go through those three or four times during the course of the year to make sure all these are uh, up to speed or they just are addressing the problems reported by the drivers. So Daco then does the big stuff for us where if we have a, you know, an engine failure, uh, all the oil changes for the vehicles uh, that are done. And besides, you know, the being able to do the work in-house at a, a bit of a savings that are there. The, the real big part of the savings are the two drivers that don't have to go to Daco to take the bus and bring it back because when the driver goes over to Daco, he's driving a full-size bus. When he gets there, he has no ride home. So somebody has to follow over there to then pick him up, bring him back. So you're taking two drivers to get a bus there and two drivers to get a bus back. So we're able, uh, you know, we've been doing this now about four years. So, you know, we've been able to uh, re- reduce our uh, support costs from our drivers for driving everywhere uh, for just general minor repairs to just having to take the vehicles for significant repairs. So it's helped keep the budget dollars down in this area.
Thank you.
Dr. Brummett, did you have something that you wanted to add? You're muted, Dr. Brummett.
Dean Barnes is on the line tonight, so he can respond to Ms. Dros' question. And I did ask him to do so, so we can get that uh, situated this evening. Mr. Barnes, can you respond to that question, please?
Yes, uh, it was in light to what um, Lou had shared with increased costs because we are seeing um, drastic costs for parts and supplies that we utilize in-house. Um, such as, I'll give you a perfect example. Uh, there is a fluid that has to be added to diesel buses, which is called DEF, the D E F.
It smells like pig urine.
Okay, well, you understand. That product that we purchased earlier on in the year for a tote of three hundred and thirty gallons was nine hundred dollars. I just received a quote today because we need another tote, um, because we are out of it, is now twenty-two hundred dollars for the same product, uh, not even a year later. So we're seeing parts costs uh, to increase. So that's why as a safety net, uh, we did add some of those cost increases because we are seeing those uh, just for parts, supplies, oil changes, because our vendors are seeing an increase. So those prices are going up as well.
Dr. Fletcher, I know it's not my turn. Can I ask him one more question along these lines?
Go ahead.
All right. So I guess my question is, is then how is that different than auto parts and supplies six twenty-five? How does that line differ than other supplies? So there's a line on the first page that says auto parts supplies for eighty-nine thousand. I see an increase. And then again, other supplies, so like, you know, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to figure out if, if every single ask is, is a hundred percent necessary. And I just want to make sure I understand what we're asking for.
Right, so there's a base price um, of items that we purchased on a normal basis. Uh, where there are some of those increases. It is some of the other added increases uh, for parts and supplies that we don't know at this point. Um, but we are seeing those increases coming forward. So uh, to just to be on the safe side, um, and to make sure that we have the uh, needed because there's so many unknowns right now in the industry uh, with parts and supplies that we are shopping around, just like we did today for DEF, to see where we could find a better price and coming into next year. Um, definitely not knowing what's going to happen with those prices.
Thank you.
Okay, and uh, next up is uh, Richard Laverrier.
Uh, Dr. Fletcher, may I uh, ask uh, Mr. Jack Mowat's question?
Please, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Jack Mowat's with um, the contracted services, five ninety-nine. How much of that is for the special ed transportation? Because I do see it says five one zero as zero dollars and I'm, I'm not sure if that's what, if that's overlap or if that, if that is included in five nine nine?
Right, the uh, amount on the uh, report sheet is, let me make sure. A million forty-eight thousand. A million, yeah, of, of the million one hundred forty-eight thousand, one million nineteen thousand of it is for special ed transportation.
Um, how come we don't use, uh, how come we contract that out? How come we don't have the drivers that we've trained to um, drive special ed transportation?
I'll let Dean take this one, just for his more, much more knowledgeable of the specific needs of all the different runs.
The Newington uh, prior to my tenure has contracted out for special ed services. Um, and the reason for that is because most of those students are specialized um, and attend various schools uh, through the district. They have specialized uh, monitors and aides that we would have to employ uh, on top of that. Um, and also for the fact that because of having routes that often are one or two children going to extensive uh, locations, it is more cost-effective to have it done by an outside service.
Okay, I mean, I mean, in a mi, over a million dollars, I'm, I'm wondering how correct that is, but um, I, okay, I, you know, I appreciate that, uh, the answer. Uh, thank, thank you, gentlemen.
I guess Dean, to try to provide a frame of reference for it. I believe we're somewhere around forty students that require the out, outside specialized transportation in the district. And it's not really too hard to get up over twenty thousand dollars per student in the charges because of both the uh, dual trip every day, uh, taking either one or two students to the same place. Along with uh, if they need an aide on the bus and any other specialized equipment, like being a wheelchair uh, service or uh, special harnesses and other um, safety requirements for the students that are involved. So I think that's pretty close. It might be more even than that.
Um, did you say, I'm sorry, Mr. Jack Mowat, did you say twenty thousand per student?
I, you know, it's not at all uh, out of the question to get bills for the year that are twenty thousand dollars or more.
Okay, and how many students did you say were using it?
I think it's around forty uh, that are there, but Dean couldn't, should, you know, kind of qualify that. I haven't.
Somewhere, somewhere in that number, we can get an exact number.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, and Ms. Sutwagner?
Thank you. Um, just really quick question. Um, I always like to be optimistic and so if there, if in the next year, we didn't need um, as many repairs um, in that line item six ninety, um, and we, we didn't end up using um, that twenty thousand, where does that money get reallocated to? So let's just say, you know, good year for the buses and we, we didn't have to buy as many supplies and parts. Um, just wondering where and how it gets uh, reallocated and just optimism.
Well, I'll start and then I'll let Dean finish on this. You know, one of the things that we have to be mindful of is that if the reason you're underspent on a line item is because you can't get the parts, there's no recourse for us other than to send the bus to Daco, which would be a significantly more expensive repair. So we really don't want to wish to be, you know, wildly under budget in this area. As far as, you know, the ability in the supply chain for who a supplier would service first, you know, Daco versus compared to ourselves would be, I would think Daco probably carries a much bigger stick than we do as far as buying power uh, for getting service, so. Uh, but with that, I'll turn it over to Dean for anything else you'd like to add to the uh, back uh, concern.
No, and, and to your question, um, where it gets reallocated to, um, that would be on the uh, position of uh, Mr. Jack Mowat's and if those funds are available, if we don't have to use them, um, then they go back to, I believe, uh, the general budget um, for the end of the year. Um, and we try to do everything, uh, when I came four years ago, we were outsourcing most of all of our repairs um, other than just lights and minor things. Um, we have greatly increased our in-house work um, to save the district as much money as possible by having that service done um, from the uh, ninety-day checks that have to be done on every single bus, every ninety days, uh, that used to be done outsourced. All that stuff is now done in-house, um, which is saving considerable amount of money for the district.
Thank you so much. That's very good to know. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, yes, and thank you, Mr. Barnes. Uh, I don't see any more hands raised for questions on transportation. So I'm going to ask you to uh, move on to community services.
Okay, all right, so we're at the last program. And thankfully, I hope it'll be the easiest one of the night to look at. Uh, community services as a budgetary program is really responsibility that we have to show to the State Department of Education for uses of the school buildings that are not for school purposes. And every year, the auditors are looking at, trying to determine, all right, what's happened in your buildings that really isn't a board of activity like uh, park and rec basketball or uh, you know, rentals of the auditorium to outside groups for other purposes. So in our budget for this, the recognition we have of expenses are um, for any um, custodial costs that we incur there for the benefit of an organization renting from us that's here, that we are in turn charging them a rental fee. The rental fee will go to the board C I P account. The expense for the custodial support goes in this part of your budget. And then we also have an allocation just uh, for uh, basic utility costs for heating and lighting for the building uh, that goes over. And uh, if we have any other uh, you know, extraneous audiovisual support charges. And we have the student uh, workers over at the high school that if somebody rents the high school auditorium for an event, they typically ask for an A V support person to help them out with using all of our resources that are there. So that's really the entire extent of the work and activities that are there. And it is just a D D U P from what is considered reimbursable educational costs for the district. So it's uh, not really controversial in any way. Um, the Board of Ed controls access to the building through their uh, building use policy, which I believe is either thirteen-ten or thirteen-twenty. And there are four schedules of activity within, one being, you know, town activities which get to use the buildings at no charge. Then Schedule B is the uh, park and rec department use, which is a cost pass-through for the people who are working uh, uh, from our uh, staff to support their activities. And then you have a nonprofit schedule for people, um, any member of the community or the area who is looking to rent a building would not be either on Schedule C nonprofit or Schedule D for profit-making uh, enterprises. And we handle that routinely during the course of the year. So uh, uh, with that, if there's any questions, I'd be more happy to answer.
Now, if I recall, we did not raise the rates last year, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and when is that due for review? Is that April or May?
It'll be sometime in May, depending on the board's schedule. I don't know the date off the top of my head.
So I noticed that you have in here that it uh, may be necessary to modify the building use permit application process. Is that something that needs to be done sooner than later or can that wait until May when we?
Oh, that can, that can wait. That's not critical, man.
All right. So do we have any questions from the board members related to this uh, this item? No questions, okay. So with that, that completes our review of all of the departments and all of the items. And so now what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Brummett and I'm going to ask you to go ahead and do your review.
Thank you very much, Dr. Fletcher. Let me um, start at the beginning here. I just wanted to, as we begin the deliberation process, I just want to remind the board of a few important tenants of the work. Uh, again, it's very important for the board and the district goals and the district improvement plans to all align. And anything that's in the budget that currently remains is very essential to the functioning of the school district. Um, we have gotten a lot of great things done in the district and I want to, you know, thank the board for their support in previous budget years that allowed many of these things to occur and that are occurring this year. Uh, here are the goals that I've reviewed with the board numerous times, both in my um, mid-year evaluation, but also in the budget process about key and important items that are integral to our work and success, which includes unfinished learning that our children are dealing with right now due to the pandemic. Making sure all of our kids have access to the high-quality instruction. Our mastery-based learning pr, practices need to continue. We have to continue to provide our administrators and staff with culture-responsive teaching practices. We are working diligently to strengthen our partnerships with families and develop high-functioning P L Cs, which is a mechanism for us to really unpack student achievement. And we want to continue to offer our preschool and plan for expansion down the road. Um, you know, over the past week or so, there's been a lot of dialogue about um, the per-people spending and the rankings that were brought up by a board member, but uh, I want to share with the board that, and remind the board that our district has significantly changing demographics. And, you know, even in the short time I've been here, we've seen an increase in special ed. Our five oh four students, our E L population, our free and reduced lunch has gone up ten percent in the last four years, which is very significant. Uh, and our open choice has gone up as well as our magnet school students. Um, all of these diverse issues within our district really impact how we teach our students, work with our students, the kinds of services they need. And, you know, in some cases, it does affect student achievement. Uh, when you have a student who's an English language learner, for example, and they may need a few years before they're proficient at taking some of our standardized tests. And for the most part, they're required to, even if they are still not fluent in the language, they get some exemptions, but not many. So all of these things play into our student achievement mechanisms. Um, the racial diversity that we're experiencing here in district continues to rise, especially our Hispanic population. Again, diversity is a wonderful thing, but it also creates uh, necess, and necessitates different programs and offerings for our children. Um, you know, I think it's important um, for the board to, and I believe most board members, if not all, understand this, that we're still in the middle of a pandemic and there's a lot of stressors that continue to uh, impact our teachers. Uh, they have a lot of challenges and stressors with our children. I will tell you, the social and emotional issues right now are extraordinarily pervasive. Uh, when you see updates from me about an ambulance at a school, often it's because of a social emotional issue. Um, so our students right now are, are challenged by coming back from the pandemic and just also normal challenges that our kids have, but they're amplified now because of the pandemic. Um, and our teachers continue to need support uh, from the board so that all of our programs continue. But this would be a, I can't think of a worse time to cut any of our services while we're recovering from a pandemic. And our teachers are extraordinarily stressed and overwhelmed. Our counselors didn't speak this evening, but their job has become significantly more difficult the last few years because of the pandemic. Um, and as I continue to reiterate to the board, we are a very diverse community. We get more diverse every year. And that does require different services for our children. Uh, there was a question posed recently about our E S S E R funding. Every position um, that is allocated through the E S S E R grant, and there are several, does not appear as lo, as a dollar amount in this budget. They are offset by the grant, therefore, they're not part of the board's budget. And as I've stated before, we have over two million dollars in grant offsets in this budget. And a lot of that is the E S S E R monies. So those folks do not appear in this budget. They are covered by the grant and one grant sunsets at the end of next year, which is largely some of our security staff. And then in two years' time, the, the larger component of the grant sunsets and that would be some of our support staff that we have added. We are just having very minimal changes to our programs for next year. We, we do uh, understand the town has asked us to be conservative in this budget. That's why we're only asking for these very minimal items. The ability to offer some courses, which is some textbook requirements in there, the Desmos math curriculum to get at our uh, math uh, achievement, reading curriculum and summer credit recovery programs. I did notice today, we got some questions about our student achievement and I hate to have one soundbite dictate the, the impression that board members have. We, we actually We actually do very, very well. Our children are achieving at high levels. Every district in the state of Connecticut has had an impact because of COVID. And last year, the year before, the state didn't even have the children take standardized tests. Last year, they did, but they are not to be used for accountability purposes because the state acknowledges that testing children in the middle of a pandemic is completely sort of, many of us felt an unfair thing to do, but the state did move forward with it anyway, and basically wants us to use it as a baseline, but certainly not as an indictment or a statement that a district is a poor-performing district, when virtually every district in the state saw a dip in their math scores last year. We had numerous things that we would have liked to put in the budget this year. I've heard the term need versus want used in the community. We determined that these were more wants than needs. Although I could argue that our science class sizes at the high school are super high right now, and we've had to turn some kids away and reschedule them into different classes because they are literally full. And there are state guidelines and safety guidelines that impact how many kids we can put in a science class. Similarly, a social studies teacher at the high school would help us reduce some class sizes that are inching toward 30 in these areas. The new director of career development, who's going to argue that that's a great idea, but certainly not something that we would put forward in a tight budget year. And the music teacher, additional music teacher to support our band program. We get national recognition for our band program, but our teachers are pretty overwhelmed by trying to make sure they offer these lessons to all children. And our high school music teachers requested some more support, but we did not include that in the budget. So here's that illustration that I used before. Nothing has changed on this slide. The reductions that the board was notified about when we first had our budget presentation, this slide has not changed, but this slide has. I would like to draw your attention to the very last entry. At the last budget meeting, we left off at requesting a budget of $80,250,854. We have since done some adjustments here. We are including a teacher that will not be replaced upon retirement this year. This also includes a position that is vacant now that we're not filling. And it also includes some adjustments for teachers who are retiring, who next year, who will need to be replaced, but we will replace them at a much lower cost. We've also eliminated a lot of materials in the budget. I've had board members reach out about textbooks, periodicals, and different, the planners that have been talked about. Those are actually planners for, I looked at, there's Martin Kellogg, Chafee, and the high school all asked for planners. Those are for student organizational purposes. They're not handbooks like with the rules or anything. They're just organizational handbooks. Those are still in the budget, but that would come under a materials item. But overall, we've reduced as many of the materials as we can, and that does bring us down to 3.99%. And we were at 4.54% when you last saw this budget illustration. We do still, you know, unfortunately, the way the budget goes right now is the board will be faced with deliberations tonight and possibly next Wednesday. We do have some looming issues that are still pending, and that is the impact of the early retirement incentive plan. I do know that Steve's office has had some interest. Today, we were asked by the administrative group to ask if we could produce an ERIT for them. So that will be something that Steve, myself, and Lou will be working on in the coming weeks, or not really weeks, probably week. I have a budget freeze right now that is in play. We're scrutinizing every purchase. We are making sure that any unfilled positions, we consider whether we have to fill them. And right now, there's at least one unfilled position that we don't intend to fill. Inflation items, you've heard that throughout our presentations, are unfortunately, you know, something that we've had to plan for. If we get any indication as the budget process continues to unfold in the coming months, we will make adjustments. You know, last year, for those board members who are new, we had budgeted for a certain amount for insurance, medical insurance. And then very much at the 11th hour, Lou was notified by our agent of record that things had gone even further down. So even though our budget was already transmitted to the town manager at that time, and the town council was deliberating about it, we sent along a memo saying, because of these new pricings, we can further reduce our budget. There is some current legislation that would allow or promote our choice revenue to increase. Tomorrow evening, I'll be testifying in front of the state legislature where I will be advocating for that. I will also be advocating for higher excess cost reimbursement. These are the things that I can try to do at the state level to impact our budget locally by asking our legislators to take more of that burden at the state level versus at the local level. And like I said earlier, if we get any takers on the early retirement incentive plan, be it a administrator or a teacher, we would consider whether they would need to be replaced. We can't answer that question now because we don't have anyone right now that is firmly signed on, though we do have certainly some interest in the teacher ranks. Here's how that budget breaks down. We do, we did have a reduction in our salary line as a result of that position not being replaced. That impacts that line, so you'll see that has gone down slightly. Nothing has changed other than right down here in our supply line where we reduced and eliminated some supplies. And therefore, our grand total or our new ask for this year is $3 million, the increase, $3,66,843 or 3.99. And again, drawing the board's attention to this line, the non-lapsing fund. Last year, in the middle of a pandemic, the board was given a 0% increase. We did not feel it was a good time to cut staff because that's what it would have taken to go to zero last year. So we accessed our non-lapsing fund. Unfortunately, when you do that, it gets you through this year. However, now that's something we have to make up in this year's budget. Had we not had a zero last year, our ask this year would have been probably in the low 2% range. So we do have to make up for lost ground, and we also have to try to prevent any further reductions to staff. So here's a budget summary. Our budget for the last two years has been $76,768,011. My new budget request is $79,834,854, which is a 3.99% increase. Again, there's been some questions raised at the town side about, gee, why is our spending so high? And what are we doing here? But I really need to draw the board's attention to, I, you know, first of all, our six-year spending history is extremely modest, 1.6%. That is by no means high for the state or for anyone, frankly. But I'll draw your attention to the two years in which I've had control over the budget. One year, we had a 2.67, and last year, we had a zero. So the two budgets that I've been overseeing have been an average of 1.03%. So it's really important for the board to understand that there have been very modest increases at the board operating budget level for the last six years, but certainly over the last two budget seasons for which I have been involved in. We've also received very modest allocations in the CIP dollars, and we are certainly getting fewer increases than the town, who have higher averages, both on their operating side and on their CIP side. There have been some more districts reporting on their budget increases. It's important to note that I don't believe any of these districts had a zero last year. I checked with all of them. I'm pretty confident that none of them did. But even at that, the average increase, and these are districts that are similar to us, not exact, as I've said to the board in our other discussions about per-people spending, these are generally districts that are similar to us in some or many measures. But so many districts are coming in higher than us. Some are coming in lower than us. The average right now for DIRD is an increase of 3.71%. Most districts are reporting, obviously, the staffing costs. Some districts have more burden on their health insurance. Our arrangement here in town is very successful at keeping our insurance costs down. Other districts report that, you know, they're experiencing the same increases as we are in just some of the supplies that have gone up due to COVID and supply chain issues. I need to be very, very clear with the board as they deliberate for the next, however long they are deliberating for regarding this budget. Any further reductions to our budget, notwithstanding if some of those other items on this page come to fruition, the earlier time and impact, but the inflation estimates, any impact from the budget freeze, any attrition or choice revenues, notwithstanding that, we will have to cut staff. And in a moment, Steve Farisi is going to highlight what that would do in terms of our services. But if we are going below 3.99, and we don't get lucky on any of those items on the previous slide, here's what the board would be faced with, that we would lose services. We would have higher class sizes. If we cut anybody who provides mental health services right now, students are in crisis many days of the week. If special ed services are reduced, we face not only the implication for the children, but also legal mandates. Our student achievement is obviously something we're trying to move forward, especially in light of the COVID learning losses. And we would still, that would just further hamper our efforts to make these, get these children back on track. School climate, culture, and morale impact. And we may need to offset it by increasing parent fees, which obviously, if the goal here is to not impact taxpayers, it really would impact taxpayers because parents are taxpayers too. So I think these are all very, very important considerations for the board. And now I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Farisi about what does it look like if the board is contemplating staff cuts? Mr. Farisi?
Thank you, Dr. Brummett. So this chart represents two things. Number one, the positions that would be available for the board to consider reducing. A reduction in force, as you heard clearly from Dr. Brummett, would significantly impact our ability to provide the services both for students, families, and our staff that are necessary, not only necessary for academic, but also social and emotional wellness, especially now that we're kind of emerging out of a pandemic. But what you'll see is their average salary. So right now, for all our non-tenure teachers, the average salary, although there's a range, but the average is 6110. The average administrator, you know, 146703, and secretary is 62976, and it kind of goes down that way. So those are the current average salaries. But then you have to think of, if you are to reduce a force, two things happen. One, if they do leave the district, they are eligible for unemployment. So the net savings always is less unemployment. So you'll see, if we were to reduce teaching staff, the net general savings, again, this is an average. It would vary based on their actual current salary, would be about 44136. And then you can see how the last column goes downward per position, right? But you have to also factor in a reduction of force in certain positions based on contractual obligations has the ability to bump into other positions. Meaning, if you were to reduce teacher force, we would have to do non-tenured staff. Otherwise, if it were a tenured position, they would have the ability to bump into a non-tenured position. So you wouldn't save on that higher rate of pay for an educator. You would have to go to the non-tenured educator, you know, rate of pay. Similarly, with an administrator, administrators have the right not only to bump other administrators, less tenure, but they also have the right to bump into the teaching ranks. So theoretically, we don't have any non-tenured administrators. So theoretically, a tenured administrator would then become a teacher at the highest rate of pay, and we would actually lose the lowest pay of teacher, which would be a non-tenured. So the savings would only be 44136 on average. So we just have to realize what all the implications or how that might work based on the contractual obligations that we have are in the system. So this chart represents that. Again, I couldn't, you know, reinforce enough that a reduction in force to us would lead to significant impact for all the efforts that we're trying to accomplish for both our students, our staff, and our families. We are helping students emerge out of a pandemic, both academically, socially, and emotionally. And at the same time, we're trying to retool a workforce to be able to meet the needs of our current, number one, demographics, academic stance, and social-emotional stance of all of our students and our families. So we want to be able to do that with the utmost level of capability. A reduction of force would definitely impact that. Dr. Brummett, if you would advance to the next slide. I can share just a little bit of some of the implications of that. Taking a clear look at some of the positions that we have available in the educator ranks and the teacher workforce. Some of our highest levels of non-tenured staff are classroom teachers. When doing an analysis of projected class sizes for next year and where these non-tenure teachers currently are, we would see, especially at the elementary level, that's where almost all of them are, class sizes of 28 to 30. And similarly, that impact would happen for our non-tenure at the middle level. We have a lot of special education teachers who are non-tenured right now. We would be in potential violation of IEP hours that we are mandated to meet. We also have a good bulk of our non-tenure staff are in the wellness department. That would limit wellness classes. It would increase significantly class sizes at the elementary level, and it would limit options, which, you know, we have wellness requirements at the high school that students would be eligible to kind of select and be a part of. Additionally, when students are at wellness, that gives teachers their planning time. Therefore, we might be in violation of teachers' contracted planning time if we don't have enough wellness periods to cover the planning that needs to take place for teachers. That's a contractual obligation. So we're cutting into a contract issue there. Social workers, I don't know. I think we've all discussed enough the need for our social workers. We were fortunate to be able to acquire more social work support, which was widely needed during the pandemic. I think an elimination of that now would be a critical loss. Additionally, social workers do support IEPs, so we could have some type of violation there as well and implications there. They also support our early intervention process. So before it becomes mandated, we try to support students early on and intervene early on so we can really provide the social support and wellness that students need to be successful in school. So those are some of the bigger level implications that we see at the teacher reduction level. At the administrator reduction level, we have multiple issues. We are mandated to conduct a certain amount of evaluations, which are spread across all our administrative staff. We have definitely mandated reports that need to happen. We have school and district improvement plans and efforts that are underway, and teachers who need our support to be able to accomplish those. And then there are significant curriculum assessment instructional ways in which we need to manage the organization and move it forward. All of our administrators lead those charges. Would there be a loss of staff supporting services and an ability to approve our capacity? I mentioned earlier, not only are we trying to improve student performance, both socially, emotionally, and academically, but also retool our staff to be able to meet the needs of our students and the future needs of our students. Our administration is pivotal in that. And it just imposes a greater load on all other administrators when we've already reduced administrative staff over the years to achieve current levels of where we are now. In the secretarial ranks, you know, they, many of you know who stop in our schools, they are the backbone of our school, and they are the backbone of our district. Our secretaries really support every operation that occurs in our buildings and in our district offices. So it would increase significantly their workload. And I don't know if we would be able to achieve the quality of service to families and staff and students that we currently do should we reduce in the number of secretarial or administrative support staff that we have. Dr. Brummett, if you would mind advancing the slide. Our custodians, they already have a very high, and I know Mr. Vider and Mr. Plum have already shared with you in previous presentations, but even more currently, just the high amount of square footage that our custodians do clean on average, and that we do maintain, our eight buildings plus athletic field area and the Board of Ed. A reduction in this area would significantly increase the square footage cleaning area, the amount of maintenance that would have to occur. I would imagine that cost would be deferred. I would imagine that cost would be deferred to contracted services, which probably wouldn't be a savings. And it, it would significantly kind of place a reduction in the services and/or increase our overtime, which then you start to see again, is it really a cost savings? The potential increased rate of deterioration and appearance of our buildings and grounds, I think would occur. And we have a potential health and safety concern, again, as we're emerging out of the pandemic. If we were to go to our administrative technicians, it would significantly limit our ability to manage our operations and services. They gather all the data and generate all the data that we need to manage our mandated reports. They significantly support the superintendent in my office in our ability to support schools and staff and be able to present to you the data that you request often. And, and the information that we need to look at to be able to really make informed decisions as an organization to make sure we are making the best decision possible in, in, you know, being responsible to this community. We've talked about it already earlier tonight, our tutor impero workforce. You know, we already have difficulty attracting and retaining that workforce. If we were to reduce it anymore, you know, we're already burdened with the inability to kind of provide for our students the necessary workforce we need in this area. And if we were to reduce it any further, it would definitely violate our mandated IEP hours for students with special service needs. Drivers, Mr. Barnes was on earlier and Mr. Giacomo had spoke to in one of his last budget presentations. Just kind of like everything from the distance that we pick students up and bus them to school to what we provide for our athletic and extracurricular programs to just our everyday runs. We already, with the amount of servicing that we provide are very strapped in, in making sure that we can do that and do that well. And, and they do a phenomenal job. A reduction in force in that area would significantly impact our ability to do that. And we'd have to really creatively look at, are we capable of even getting busing to where we have to within the town? And might we have to change some of those policies and have less students on our buses? If we were to reduce drivers at this time. Our nurses, goodness, what they've done for us the past couple of years, I can't speak enough to the significance of their servicing. They're not just nurses, but they're healthcare providers for staff, students and families. They work literally 24/7 right now. I can't imagine us without one less of them. They are, they are critical and essential employees in my mind. And our security officers have equally been the same. They provide the safety and ability for our schools to be able to function and operate smoothly. That is at the early part of the day, throughout the day within, and then thereafter. And not only do they do security work for us and manage kind of traffic flows, but in the schools, they are critical in the operations of how students are able to navigate within the school. They actually do support our staff in being that next line of being there for kids and being there for staff at the same time throughout the day. They support students in the cafeteria, they support students in the hallway. They have become critical members of the school community who provide services beyond security in our schools. So, you know, I look at this and, and I think a reduction in staff at this time couldn't be anything that we would promote because they're essential, all of them, in the functions and operations of what we're doing to try to continue to make Newington an attractive place for people to want to come to, but also an amazing place for people who are currently residing in Newington.
Thank you, Mr. Farisi. And, and before we entertain any questions, Dr. Fletcher, just want to update the board on next steps. I am actively going to PTO and faculty meetings. I am putting faculty on notice that there is talk of potential reductions because of the looming threat of a zero. That is fairly unsettling for people, but actually we are required by law that if this is still looming. Mr. Farisi, what's the date that we're required to put teachers on notice that they could be laid off?
Legally, we have to inform non-tenured staff by May 1st. But the process would have to begin about a month sooner than that. Because we would have to, to meet with them, inform them that this might be happening, generate a letter that would inform them that this might be happening. And then they would have to have the official notice in hand by May 1st.
So it is quite a process when we're dealing with members of the teachers' union. They have a very, it's a state regulation that guides on how that we handle that. So the board has a work, obviously we're in a workshop right now. There's a workshop for next Wednesday. We are required to send our budget to the town manager by March 1st. And then Dr. Fletcher and I are going to present to the town council on March 22nd. This date was previously incorrect. It is actually the 22nd. I believe previously it said the 8th. And there are, there's a public hearing on April 5th. That would be when folks from the community can comment on the budget. And the town adopts the budget and sets the mill rate by April 19th. So those are deadlines set both by the town and by our rules and regulations. So I will turn it back over to Dr. Fletcher for any questions or for next steps.
Okay, so we're going to begin with Danielle Drose.
All right, I have a couple of questions. So I'm going to ask my first one and then I'll re-raise my hand. Okay, does that work, Dr. Fletcher?
That works.
Okay, so my first question is for Dr. Brummett, if that's okay?
Yes.
All right, so my first question is the S R funds were used to hire people. If those people were reduced, right, if, if we chose to like get rid of, I don't know, say instructional coaches, would the S R funds be able to be reallocated to a different position?
The parameters of the grant are that it is meant for, and I had to write specific goals around how the funds would be used. So they're not, they're not to be used, they're not supposed to be used to backfill a budget. So if I wrote a goal around the coaches, which I did for the two that are at the high school, they are grant funded, then they, even if we were to get rid of them, I'd have to write a goal about acceleration of learning in some other way, shape or form. And it would be around a position. So the short answer to your question is no, we really couldn't like cut two coaches and then use that to save two classroom teachers because the state is, you know, audits these grants. And they're going to say, wait a minute, you told us you were using it for this. And now you're reallocating it to a, a position you had to begin with. That's not what this money is for. So there are, there are regulations around this grant money.
Okay, so we'll go next to Anastasia Yop.
Hello, I have a couple of questions, but I'll do exactly what Danielle did. I'll just re-raise my hand. So question is for Dr. Brummett. Why would we during a pandemic even consider cutting security nurses at all? And why would we consider cutting custodians and security when the admin had the highest average of salaries out of everyone else? I mean, we need nurses and we need security. So why was that even an option?
Well, that presentation by Mr. Farisi that I asked him to pull together was simply to illustrate how much each of those positions are worth and how that would, if cut, impact quote, our bottom line. I want to be very clear with the board. I'm not endorsing the cutting of any positions. I think cutting any position in the middle of a pandemic is an absolute detrimental, significantly negative impact on the district. So I'm not endorsing the cutting of any positions, but my obligation is to let the board know what would, if you choose to cut positions or recommend significant reductions, here's what we'd have to look at and here's what would be the financial impact. And I wanted to make sure the board understood that if you cut an $80,000 teacher, they would still be entitled to unemployment benefits. So you really don't net $80,000. You net the cost of that teacher minus their unemployment that we have to pay. So there's a lot of things to consider if we do look at any reduction in force. And then as Mr. Farisi indicated, if, if we were to cut an administrator, then that administrator would have rights to bump someone else. So we would not save a whole lot of money because they would have the right to then take a position in an area that they're certified in per their contract. So it, these, any changes to our staffing has a ripple effect on the entire system.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'm more of a comment than a question. I just wanted to note that the, the figures listed, and I'm not advocating for, you know, laying anyone off. But for the sake of, you know, understanding, the figures listed with the unemployment figures is the maximum potential liability. Theoretically, somebody who gets laid off, if it was to happen, could get a job in two weeks and not collect all that unemployment money. So that those figures are representing the maximum liability, if I'm understanding correctly. Thanks.
I would definitely agree with that. Mr. Farisi, are you in agreement with that statement?
Oh, I would absolutely agree. And I would say, especially during this pandemic, that anyone who is not returned to employment for us is collecting and collecting the maximum. I, we can, yeah, we're, we're having that trend significantly over the past two to three years.
All right, thank you. Okay, Danielle Drose.
All right, so my next question I think might actually be to Ms. Lu. Dr. Fletcher, I'm going to ask, I'm not sure who wants to answer it. Is that okay?
Go right ahead.
All righty, so, you know, we're asking for this 3.99%, but I, I guess I'm confused because we also are asking, and I'm estimating another like nine million, sorry, not nine million, $1 million because of the buses and the computers that we asked for with the town, the town to fund the public school CIP. So I'm concerned that we're actually asking for an additional $1 million on top of that. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
I mean, they're two separate budgets, but aren't we really asking for that much money?
Yes, that's correct. Historically, up until the last few years where we backed off a number of our requests in the CIP area to allow the town's town hall project to move forward. The board needs were deferred for two years in that fashion. So we're at a very low point right now where last year, all we got was the required $125,000 appropriation to the board CIP account. And this year there was a supplemental $200,000 capital improvement allowance for security improvements for the district. You know, looking back five to 10 years, the numbers were much higher when, I can remember when the capital improvement project committee was kind of taking shape 12, 13 years ago. You know, they were targeting around a million dollars a year for what it would take to replenish and maintain board facilities. You know, we're nowhere near those numbers at this point. So yes, it's spiking up, but it's really spiking back up to something even remotely close to what would be appropriate for the size and the scope of, you know, the infrastructure of the district. If, I don't know, if I can just jump in for a second on the last thing with the unemployment. One thing board members need to be aware of is that if you break the continuity of somebody's employment, they still can collect unemployment. So if a individual gets rifled and they leave school without a contract with us for the summer, they're eligible for unemployment all summer, even though they might, you know, get a new contract with another district for September, we would still be obligated for all during the summertime. So it's not that the day they sign a contract, we're off the hook. It would be the day they actually start working again somewhere else if we break that continuity of employment.
Okay, well, thank you. Anastasia Yop.
Beth had her hand raised. Can I let her go first? If that's okay?
Okay, I, it disappeared.
She's been waiting for a while, sorry.
I didn't see it. Okay, Beth, hot back there, go ahead.
Oh, thank, thank you so much. Thank you. I'll make it brief. I just wanted to look back at, Dr. Brummett, you mentioned early retirement savings, budget estimate, the inflation may come in lower, the choice revenue and attrition possibilities. I know this might be difficult to answer, but do you know an estimate of when those numbers are figured out, how that may affect the budget? Or did I miss that? Which I, I do apologize if I missed that.
No, you did not miss it because there are projections. So, you know, I would be comfortable, and I shouldn't, I shouldn't say this, but I, I do think we'll probably have at least one taker for the EIRIP program. So perhaps we can say there may be another $50,000 savings coming our way or open choice legislation that I won't know about until the legislative session does conclude. And, you know, to see whether that's moving in the right direction. Attrition, again, that is also along the same lines as the EIRIP program does that. When we know someone is leaving, can we say we're not going to replace them? It really just depends on who, who is opting for this early retirement incentive. So those are somewhat hard to predict. That's why we put ranges in there. Like, you know, if no one takes it, it's a zero impact. If 10 people take it, it might be a 40 or $400,000 impact or somewhere in between. I'm hoping we see it 50,000 or more. But it, right now, I mean, if we get word in the coming week that there is a teacher or someone that is taking this, we can update the board immediately or in our subsequent budget workshop, what that impact is. You know, Mr. Farisi is offering informational meetings so that teachers can get as much information about this as possible. And Mr. Giacomo will also be part of that. As I mentioned a few moments ago, we did get interest from our administrative union that they would like us to consider an early retirement plan for them. That could bring about some savings, not much, but it would be a possibility. So it's really hard to predict right now. I mean, I would say in all fairness, something in that list will likely shake out and something will afford us the opportunity to make some other minor adjustments. I think that's a fair statement. I just can't really say what.
Thank you. That, that does answer my question. I just, I know this is a time for questions, but I just have to quickly just go on record. As a teacher, this is, this is one of the most challenging years in teaching and I thought it was just me, but thank goodness it's not or whatever. I've talked to teachers kind of all over the country and all over Connecticut. So I just strongly feel that as a group, my own personal opinion is that we got to look at things that we can cut, if that's what we're doing before, before the class, the, the classroom teachers who are really heroes this year.
Okay, thank you. Danielle Drose. Did you put your hand back down and bring it back up? You're muted, Danielle.
All right, so I did, but I, I feel like I'm, I'm cutting in front of Anastasia.
I'm only going according to what Google is giving me as firsthand.
All right, so Anastasia, I'm going to go just, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, it's okay.
My next question is, it's more of a request. I don't know if we can get this, Dr. Brummett. I know that the Sback scores were not reported out. Obviously, we can't compare what happened in 2019 to 2020. Like, I, I understand that as a teacher, but is there anything, are we allowed to compare even so we can see apples to apples, like how the other districts in our Derg did on the Sback scores? I don't know if that's, I have no idea because I know I tried to find it and it's like some deep secret. Like, I know how my district did, but I'd just be curious to see how we fared compared to other districts. And another quick one, I agree completely with Beth as a teacher. If we can cut other, you know, cutting teachers, classroom teachers, last thing should be cut. We work really hard and there's got to be another way that we can cut from this budget. So I agree with Beth wholeheartedly.
Okay, thank you. Now Anastasia Yop.
I'm sorry, I'm going to respond to Ms. Drose's question. I don't, I know we were able to see states. Are we able, Wendy, could you comment on that Sback question?
Yes, I could. We were able to see the state and that might be Danielle, what the, what you ran into. If you go to Edsite and try to look at districts for last year, you cannot access it. One of the reasons is that the, remember that we had distance learning classes last year. We had some students that were last year, we had some students that were completely remote. So while some of our students took the SBA in school, others took it remotely, and that was true across the state. Those test scores were reported separately because a different protocol was used. So there is not a place where they have reported out one score for schools. And even, even in our data, we have to look at it with, here's what it looks like for our kids who took it in-house. Here's what it looks like for our kids who took it remotely. And then we had to do the math to figure out if we wanted to put it all together. So that's really one of the reasons you're, you're not finding it. It's, it's, it's not there. They haven't put it out. And they also did not want to report it that way because of the reasons that Dr. Brem was talking about earlier, that it wasn't intended to be used that way last year.
Thank you for the answers, and I apologize for cutting it off. Okay. Anastasia Yop.
Okay. So I have two questions. One is for Mr. Ferici, if that's okay?
Yes, anyone.
You stated, you stated that, that we have a hard time finding staff and, you know, and teachers. But I was under the impression that how can someone still collect if you have open positions that you can't backfill? Wouldn't you be calling those people you laid off back? And then per unemployment, if the employer lays you off, and I'm not talking about summertime, and you refuse to go back, they can't continue to collect unemployment. So wouldn't you, you know, call those people back first? Because you were saying that you're having the issue, people are collecting, collecting. But they can't be collecting, collecting if you're, you know, if you're lacking staff and need to fill that in. Those would be the first people I would call. They're already, you know, the system, they're already trained.
Thank you. So I'm not sure if I'm going to answer this correctly, so please, you know, clarify for me if I'm going down the wrong, wrong path. But I was, I think Lu and I were referring to if we were to lay people off, a reduction of staff, then they would, they would collect unemployment. I do know that people, we are getting a lot of situations right now, where people will come and join us for just a week or two, and then just never show up again. And we get a lot of that. And they're the ones who are collecting. And yes, we still have their hope in position, but they're not coming back. We're getting very unique situations right now that we've never really experienced before with examples like I just gave, where I'm literally on the phone with unemployment and doing unemployment hearings a couple times a week. And people will fight to say that, you know, and they'll give multiple reasons, a lot, mental health, or certain other reasons why they can't come back. And the claims are quite a bit plentiful.
Thank you. And my second question is, why, I looked at the tab that said the general supplies, I think that's what it's called. It was the green tab called general supplies. And I saw a member of the public Dana Havens had mentioned that during Collins being superintendent, they had implemented that the supplies were to help students who maybe couldn't afford. Well, if I look at this tab, I apologize for the coughing, it's $241,000. So let's not look at staff. Let's look at, like, you know, referring to what Beth said, let's look at things that we can cut in the budget while we want to keep all of our staff. Why don't we hold the parents accountable? And I understand, you know, some people lost their jobs and things like that. But some of these supplies can be purchased by parents. I mean, that's $241,000. And this isn't supplies just in the classroom. These are supplies that were, are purchased, you know, pencils, glue sticks. I mean, this is something I'd look at cutting instead of cutting that position. I mean, is that something that anyone has considered?
Yeah, I can start. And then I would turn it over to, to Mr. Jakomowitz and Dr. Brem. I would tell you, and I think Dr. Brem said this very clearly, and I tried to maybe articulate it, but maybe not so well. The very last thing I would recommend is reduction of force. I do not believe we should cut staff. I feel that we have an obligation to share with the board if we need to get to a certain percentage, and it requires that, what the cost savings would be if we have to. So that was the only reason for sharing those numbers, because we have an obligation to share with the board what it would be if we were to move in that direction. But I wholeheartedly would do not want to move in that direction. I, we have amazing staff, and I want to keep them all.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more comment, Dr. Brem, on that?
I would just want Lu to comment on these supplies. And it, you know, to Ms. Yop's point, are, you know, what is the purpose of those? Why do we provide those supplies? Can you illuminate on that? Or is that something we should do as a follow-up next week?
Yeah. Probably best if I did it as a follow-up. I did have John do a chart, which illustrates the buying patterns of how we can take, how we do take advantage of where the best prices are across numerous contracts that are here. This program also is like one-third for the person who is responsible for that, and two-thirds of it's the actual supplies. Board also needs to recognize that this individual has about four other partial assignments blended in with the role and responsibility of handling the supply services for the district. You know, the individual is responsible for taking care of the fixed asset inventory for the board side that's reported to the town. The individual handles all the public surplus activity where, when we have surplus items, we put it out for sale through a open forum for bidding, where those dollars are then recouped by the town. I don't know exactly how much it's been, but I wouldn't be surprised if we're up $30,000, $40,000 of recovery of items so far this year on dollars that have been returned to the town because of the diligence of, instead of just putting it in the dumpster, being able to recycle it again and get those dollars to come back to the town. The individual also participates and provides a job opportunity for some of the kids in the transition academy, for what they can do for, working with digitizing records, as well as working in the environment of managing the warehouse and filling orders that go out to the schools. The individual also handles the overnight security and weekend security for the district responding to any of the alarms that are called when a system goes bad, or there's an incident with Sonatrol. And the individual also helps with putting together public bids for us and arranging contractual responsibilities. So the job is very multifaceted, instead of just being a warehouse picker that's just fulfilling orders and just delivering them. That's, you know, substantially smaller portion of the actual job than, you know, how it actually shows on the piece of paper here.
Thank you for that clarification.
All right. Thank you. Jessica Weaver.
Um, yeah, just real quickly, I kind of thought we clarified too, like this is, those general supplies is for like paper across the district to like every copier, every like paper and pencil. And I don't, just personal opinion, like if you're gonna cut that and then ask parents to pay for it, which they already still are paying for tons of supplies. I know Amy Pirati, like her kids got a list or whatever. I don't know what past administrations did, but you're just putting it back on the parents and the taxpayers. So it's like, you know, paying Peter to Paul, to Rob Paul. I don't know. But in that line of questioning, I'm wondering, Dr. Brem, if you could put up that slide again, for me, like, it's clear where the drivers of the costs are, are the two big ones are contracted salaries, and then the other one is the non-lapsing fund. And I guess if you could just clarify for me, like with the non-lapsing fund, the, and this was a discussion we've had at past boards where we were like, okay, if we dip into this, this is a bit of kicking the can down the road, where it will come back to bite us, so to speak. I feel like that's kind of what's happening here. So if we, let's just say hypothetical, didn't fund the non-lapsing, like, what happens?
Would you like me to take that, Maureen, or would you like?
I don't know if we answered that, by the way.
I would say that's a Lu question.
Okay. Right. If you can leave that slide up for everybody?
Yes.
Okay. The non-lapsing fund is your piggy bank. So when the piggy bank's empty, there's nowhere to go anymore. So at the start of this year, there was $3,128,419 in the fund. Okay. As of right now, we're not contemplating adding anything extra to the fund, because we believe we're going to have to dig in to get the $2 million that we built our budget around. So instead of a $76 million budget, we actually have a $78 million budget that is offset by the $2 million of resources, where we're going to shuttle off $2 million of expenses to that fund. So the value of that is a budget increase 2.61%. Okay. The other item, which is the negative, is saying, okay, we have $1,128,000 left, provided everything works out, and we actually take a full $2 million on it to offset against this year's budget. So if you can recall from the slide I presented in the last, Dr. Brem's initial presentation, when we stripped away the impact of the non-lapsing fund, it required a 3.4% just for continuing operations, irrespective of the funding mechanics associated with the non-lapsing fund. Here you can see that the 2.61% catch-up funding that's needed is offset by kicking the can down the road for 1.47% of that. So the net's 1.14% of what's in the budget. So the 3.99 less 1.14 takes us to about 2.85% continuing operations for the Board of Ed for this, for the upcoming year, if this passes and is funded by the town. You know, the overlay of the non-lapsing fund is if we are at the end of the line at the $1,128, we really just are having a budget that's not fully funded. And you can look at other approaches to do it, but unless those dollars get into the appropriation for the Board of Ed, the Board is always going to be chasing and vulnerable to being chronically underfunded in the future.
Okay, thanks. Because I, I mean, I'm just looking at this, like, again, we've gone through a huge budget book, but from the simplification of this, right, the first three lines, I know, to me are already baked in as natural contractual increases, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. And so the thing that we have to parse through really is that 0.58% of all other supplies, utilities, et cetera. And then the non-lapsing fund's the biggest driver. So I just think that's something, you know, to consider. And I just wanted to understand the consequences. Thank you.
So Dr. Brem, would it be possible for you to just copy that one slide and email it to all of us? That is a great reference slide.
Absolutely. I will do that this evening. You'll have it in your inbox shortly.
Very good. Very good. Okay. Danielle Dros.
So Jessica brought up a good point that I didn't even see. So I guess if we can get these type of things ahead of time, I'm working off my Chromebook. My husband has purchased me a big screen, but he hasn't installed it yet. It's, it would be a lot easier if I had this, you know, ahead of time, I could print it out and have paper copies. But with that, are we saying that we are just, that 2.61, we're just looking to replenish what was in the non-lapsing fund? Am I underst, because Lu, when you talk, sometimes I don't understand when it's like kicking the can down the road. So is it just that we're looking to replenish the $2 million that we took last year? And if so, isn't the non-lapsing fund funded by when we have excess from our budget, we put it into our piggy bank?
Correct. Correct. The funding, when the legislation was written for that, it was the presumption that if the Board of Education was in a spot where they had excess funds in one year, that they could create a piggy bank for themselves for going forward into the future. So if you declare a surplus at the end of the year and direct it to the non-lapsing fund, we're authorized to do 1% in town. And the federal, the state legislation will allow up to 2% per year with no cap on the fund. The money that goes over there, most districts have an arrangement where it's primarily for capital needs and equipment, which are more the one-time purchases, not being a part of your ongoing operating budget. So it's not a matter of replenishing the non-lapsing fund, which has to go through the board expenditures and being directed there. It would need to be, if you don't have the money to declare as a surplus, there, no money gets into the account.
Right.
And, you know, by funding it there, and it's not being in the board appropriation, those continuing expenses, like the salary base of an employee that goes from $75,000 to $78,000 to $81,000, never gets reflected, and you're always going to be short in succeeding years. So that $2 million really needs to come back as an increase to the board appropriation, not a replenishment somewhere else outside of the system. And if our discipline with the non-lapsing fund just reverts to being capital goods only, it puts your every-year budget situation on a much more even keel. So if you only have $500,000 in the non-lapsing fund, and it's earmarked just for equipment, that's all you have to work with. It doesn't...
Okay. So I'm, I'm a very intelligent human being. I'm still not understanding. So this is where, this has been my thing with the board budget, it's transparency. I'm, I know that there's other people from the public on here as well. So is that 2 million? So I see on this sheet that we, we need 1.58% to cover salary increases. I get it. I'm a teacher. I like my salary increase. That $2 million in here, like, I don't understand why, why, I just don't understand where the 2.61% increase to the budget is coming from.
All right. Your budget for this year, in reality, was $78,768,000. The board's appropriation was $76,000, $76,768,000. So there's a $2 million difference between all the line items in your budget and what you were authorized by the town.
Okay.
So that $2 million for this year is coming from the non-lapsing fund. There is not another $2 million available in the non-lapsing fund to keep it going for another year.
So that $2 million is just sprinkled throughout the budget in some place?
It will be an offset to salaries.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That answers your question? Okay. So Amy Pirati.
Thanks. Yeah. So just kind of continuing on that non-lapsing. So I, I just want to be clear and make sure that I understand and everyone understands that we're not replenishing. It's gone because we needed it last, or this year to fund salaries. So we're only asking for that $2 million, the 2.61 increase, because we had contractual obligations that needed to be fulfilled for this school year that we couldn't fulfill with what the town gave us. So again, if we don't get the 3.99 that we're asking for, even, you know, 3.5, because, or 3.42, because Jessica pointed out, that 0.58% is really like the supplies and, you know, non-contractual obligations. So if we don't get the 3.99, or the, a little bit lower than that, if we cut anything, I'm not advocating for that necessarily, but, you know, we are still going to be, or we will be in the hole. And there's not another $2 million to use this upcoming school year. There's only, I can't, I can't remember what it was, 1, 1.4 something, whatever, the remaining in the non-lapsing fund. You know, kicking the can down the road, what's going to happen next year? If we don't get 3.99%, we're going to cut staff, we're not going to be able to fulfill contractual obligations, and there's going to be nothing in our savings account. So I think it's just very important to make that clear, that it's not getting replenished, it's a debt that we have. And, you know, it's not smart. I personally, in my own budget, don't spend all of my savings. You know, you, you want to have a, a nest egg. You want to have something to fall back on in case of an emergency. So I think that's just very important to keep in mind. Thank you. And make sure, am I right, Mr. Jakomowitz?
Yes. That's a very good way of putting it. Yeah. The piggy bank's empty.
Okay. So Anastasia Yop.
I just had a comment to make, and then maybe a question. So last year, we had a 0% increase, is that correct? But we still had almost $3 million in our quote-unquote piggy bank. I am not saying that I'm not for, you know, some of the services that we need, but I'm saying that I think as a board, we need to take a closer look at some of, you know, the items, and maybe not necessarily the paper, you know, maybe just collectively, and I know we've never collectively, and I know we've never done this before, some towns do, go through this and really see, you know, where we can save money and what can maybe be put off. Because no one wants to see teachers, I definitely don't want to see nurses in security cut or anyone cut. But we really need to, you know, look at some of these things and say, hey, where can we save some money? And I think that we all have a common goal. We all want what's best for the children. We all want what's best for the staff. But, I mean, I just don't think we need all of this. There's something that, you know, maybe we can, and I'm not going to point out exactly what I think. I'm just taking my notes, but I think there are some things where like, hmm, well, maybe this can be, you know, held off on. I just, I just can't see all of this being, you know, needed right away. So that's just what I'd like to say.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the administration?
Well, I, I guess I would ask Dr. Fletcher or the board or Dr. Fletcher to get this information from the board. What exactly is the board looking for regarding a cut or a percentage decrease? As has been stated numerous times tonight, unless we get lucky on some of those variables that, that were discussed, you know, we're getting right near that line of cutting people. Where I think I'm hearing tonight, and I'm very pleased that I'm hearing tonight, that people don't want to cut people. The board doesn't want to cut people. They'd rather cut stuff. And I guess if that's the direction we're headed in, you know, what that would look like is cutting things that we would then go below what we think is the projected amount that we need. You know, we could cut utilities, for example, even though we know utilities are going up and roll the dice and say, no, maybe they won't go up. Those are the kinds of things that we could do. It's a little risky, but if that's the direction the board wants to go in, then we would do that in lieu of cutting people. But we would just need some direction as to what is this, you know, what's the magic number? And what is the risk the board's willing to take relative to anything that we might cut now? And then next year, we overexpend in that line because utilities came in like we predicted, or I'm using that as an example, but that's just one of many examples. So that probably would help this discussion. But I will turn it back over to Dr. Fletcher.
Okay. I know we got one more question that's up there right now, so I'll get to you in just a moment, Danielle. But I think that what we need to do, we're, we're hearing all of these things tonight, which was my goal for this meeting. Now, we're going to reconvene with this next Wednesday. And I think at that time, that would give us all some time to take a look at everything and to come up with some numbers. Things that we think that we could do. So I, I think at this point, it's going to be rather difficult to come up with those tonight. I, I don't know if you guys are in agreement with what I'm saying. So that's going to give us one week. I mean, each group can caucus. You can get together, talk about these different things. And then we can come back with some more firm numbers next week and some more firm ideas. We're just going to be batting things around tonight otherwise. So Ms. Weaver, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to request, if we could. I'm sorry, Ms. Drows, I didn't know, your hand was down. Go ahead.
Dr. Fletcher had called on me and then he just started talking. Go ahead, Jess. Mine's a quick one. It's, go ahead.
I'm sorry, you put your hand down, Danielle. I have to see.
He called on me and in class when the teacher calls on you, you put your hand down.
Okay, all right, all right.
It's really quick. Um, if possible, along those lines, it's almost like Dr. Fletcher had like fed into this. We used to get, and I know that you've done it, we do it like quarterly, whatever, like a sheet of kind of where we are at currently with all of the different accounts, just so we can kind of get an idea of like where we are, where, you know, seventy nine days left to the school year theoretically, now that I'm counting. So it would be helpful to do what Dr. Fletcher said with that information. It was quick.
Thank you. Lou, is that something that? You can, hands up or hands down, it's the magic hand. Mr. Jackamowitz, is that something that you could prepare?
Uh, it could be prepared, you know, the depth of the analysis, you know, has to be forecasted out to where it's going to be at June thirtieth. Because it's not a linear expenditure pattern that we have where one twelfth of the expenses do not occur every month and you'll know where you're at. You know, we're very much back unloaded because of the way the teacher contracts are structured and how they get paid as well as a number of the activities, you know, focus on things that do get kicked off for the summertime that happen and are planned for in April and May. So there's a big effort on that. I mean, I certainly can come up with a best guess, but it would have a definite element of art that goes into it rather than scientific, okay, here's forty purchase orders, which is getting us there. We have no way to really affect anything of that magnitude to try to design a comprehensive analysis with a forecast for June thirtieth this early. I mean, I can come up with some rough ideas, but it would be, you know, filled with you know, assumptions and assessments I would have to make. So it would not, you know, it would have, you know, my professional judgment all over it. It's just, you know, just recognizing that that's what you guys plan me to do and, you know, try to give good advice and good guidance in these areas. But as far as if, you know, there was that level of transaction by transaction assessment would be, you know, tremendously difficult, if not impossible, to come up with in just a week.
So it would be a something you could do, but it would be exercise caution in how reliable and accurate it would be.
Right, yeah, right. You know, I could certainly have something for next week of the basic nature.
So the answer is we're going to give it a stab at it, but we'll exercise, we're just going to stamp caution all over it that it may not be a hundred percent.
Right.
I don't know if I didn't answer it. So like you, you've given us sheets that say like we wanted to reallocate funds from one account to another and we voted on it like a month ago. I voted no and it caused a big, big ruckus. It was my first board meeting. Like, if you can give us something like that, just so I can get an idea of kind of like, I, I understand, like, we haven't spent all our money, but like there's ones on there that I know that were like at a hundred and ten percent you were over and you were reallocating funds. It would be helpful to kind of have one of those right now. If you were going to ask us to reallocate funds, what would it look like? It doesn't need to be a projection, but just so I can be like, oh, look at, we're already, we're already ten percent over where we were with seventy nine days left to go.
I'll see what I can come up with for that type thing. I'm not, you know, usually by objects are a better way where I'd analyze the whole salary package as one aggregated analysis rather than program by program. Where I could see where things are heading, how I can make, you know, informed judgments about what's going to happen with our salaries in aggregate. Rather than trying to break it down, okay, I'm going to be two hundred thousand dollars over in language arts, I'm going to be a hundred seventy five thousand under in math and kind of get lost in the detail there instead of, you know, I think I have to really look at it more on a macro basis than the, you know, granular basis at this point. But, you know, I can, if that's the preference, I can certainly try to accomplish that.
All right. And thank you. So we got a couple more hands up. Jessica Weaver.
Uh, yeah, just quick, Maureen, if this is possible, to be able to send out, I don't know the full presentation or not, but I think the Derg comparison is also helpful for, in my perspective, I guess. Cause I just, in terms of wrapping my head around this, I look at all of the other districts too. I think there's always, you know, there's been a lot of talk about like how we compare to other districts and poor people's spending and all this jazz. If we, I mean, I'm not going to put it on you to get like the, I know everyone didn't get a, got a non-zero last year. If we could get like what they got last year and then obviously theirs are, you know, I look at Weather Shields as our, you know, lovely football rival here, they're getting much more at a full percentage more or requesting a full percentage more. I think it's just helpful in terms of the simple visualization of where all of our reference groups are at in terms of what they're asking for this year. Cause I think we, we've done that in the past. But it would also be helpful to get last year's recommendations. And I know that that's probably the impossible task. You know, I feel like we could all do our research, but just trying to like look up oh, we requested two point whatever last year but got zero. So if we had gotten that, what would this year's budget be? I'm just trying to be able to rationalize where that gap was and how we're making that gap up with this budget. That makes sense.
Okay, I, I did send everyone the full presentation. I still have Derg current information. I did try to look into that. I will try again to see if there's a publication of what every every district got last year. And if necessary, I pretty much know all the superintendents representing that grouping. I can just make some phone calls to see. So you want me to compare what these districts got last year to what they're asking for this year?
That would be helpful, I think, just to understand, because it's clear that there's a trend of increase. And we, we know that, you know, we're making up for a zero, but I, I'm just curious to see the large increase by other districts, even larger, who didn't get a zero last year. Um, I just think we're, we really need to account the pandemic effects into this as well as just, you know, what the past budget did to, to this budget. That would be helpful. I think the visualization is really helpful. So, um, thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, I, I, thank you very much. I believe I can obtain that prior to next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take one more person and then we're going to move on. So Sam Sharma.
Hi, Lou, I got a quick question. If, if, if we use the one point one two eight million that's in the non-lapsing fund, is that, that means it's gone? So there's nothing in that fund or, I mean, it's like a savings account? So if we use that now, that means we'll have nothing in that account?
That's correct. That's, we're on the working presumption that all two million dollars will be taken during this fiscal year. And then the million one four hundred forty nine thousand will be taken next fiscal year. Then all the resources will be exhausted.
So if we did not have that money, then our ask would be like a million dollars more, right?
Yes, million one hundred twenty eight thousand more, right.
Okay, and just another follow up. If you can, Maureen, if you can share with us like data from like other districts that are like similar to ours and then, you know, just like what Jessica said in terms of like how much, you know, the, the budget was and how is the, and we got a zero, right? So something that we can, so we get some context in terms of like what's going on. That'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So in the preceding days, I'm going to request that if anybody has any questions relative to the budget that you email me directly, not the entire board. And I will take care of getting that to the superintendent or to the person that it needs to go to. If we do it any other way, then it becomes FOI-able. And we want to avoid that in those communications. Okay? So what we're going to do is we're going to pick up next Wednesday night. Our whole focus is going to be the budget. So I'm encouraging each group to caucus in between. And any questions that you have, you know, direct them to the right people. And we will pick this back up again next week. What time did we schedule the meeting for next week, Dr. Brummett?
Currently, I believe it is still at seven, but I'm going to verify that. Yes, currently it is seven o'clock.
I think that if there are no objections, that I would prefer to start again at six o'clock.
I agree. Please.
Yeah, only simply because of the nature of, you know, budget discussions and so forth.
And we're getting closer to the deadline of transmission to the town manager.
Yeah, I want to try to avoid doing two meetings next week. So we can begin at six o'clock, okay? All right. So with that said, I am going to move on to item G, which is our public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. Civil participation is limited to three minutes. We ask that when you come on, you state your name and the street that you live on. You do not need to give me the number of the street that you're on for your own security. And again, we just limit you to three minutes. All right? So I'll wait a moment to see if anybody wants to comment or has questions. It doesn't look like we have anybody that wants to do that. So I am going to move on to any final remarks from the board members. Anything that you didn't get an opportunity to share or ask, I'm going to give you that chance right now before we adjourn. Seems like it's quiet on the western front here. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's bated second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all so very much and we will see you next Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thank you.